So I'm noting the time and the presence of a quorum. So I'm now going to call the Acton, Boxboro Regional School Committee to order. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for attending Acton Town Meeting on April 1st, especially the Boxboro members. I think it's important for a town meeting to put a face to this important school leadership team. So thank you for coming on the first. And I want to thank Mary as well for stationing herself in the check-in area to pass out the flyers to publicize the new school building project. Really appreciate that. As you all know, all three Warren articles passed, and the Kelly's Corner Warren article passed. So it's on to Boxboro. Their town meeting is May 13th. Is it, so with the zoning changes, is it still all over the map here when we come?
So the expectation is that now, the first night of town meeting, I believe, although we have the OF meeting next week, right? The first night of town meeting will be a regular town meeting. So we should be able to get through all the school articles and everything, and there will be a special town meeting the second night to cover the marijuana issue. But yes, the zoning articles are off.
And there will be a place for us to sit up front?
There will be a place for us to sit.
Okay, so we're back to normal.
So last time we had said maybe Acton didn't have to come, but I think if they can make it, the Acton members should come. That's what I think.
The Boxboro elections are May 21st. I'll also announce that. As you are all aware, Acton elections were held on March 26th, and about, we had about 13% of registered voters vote. I do want to congratulate Janine Kramer for, on her reelection. And we do need to say goodbye to Eileen. We did purchase her a gift for her, and I want to take a moment to thank her publicly. Is there anyone else who wants to say anything about her before I say something? Yeah? You want me to go first? Okay. So, okay. She's attending an orientation for her son's college this evening, so she can't be with us. But as I said, we do have a gift for her in appreciation for her service. Over the course of her three-year service on school committee, Eileen and I had many conversations about Western and Eastern ideas about education and about what success looks like for our school-aged children. For me, Eileen represented a voice that has not been present on school committee since full regionalization, and I wanted to fully understand her beliefs and her convictions, and she mine. But the most important lesson that I learned from Eileen really has nothing to do with the cultural values about education. The most important lesson I learned from Eileen as we both, as we both struggled to better understand each other was the realization that the struggle itself began to loosen the bonds of the single story we had been insisting on about each other. And that had, in the words of Chimamanda Adichie, flattened our experience and made us a little less fully human in each other's eyes. So I want to thank her for the gift of expanding my understanding, and I hope I also did that for her.
Yeah, I want to say something that even I just worked with Eileen for just about a year, and I didn't really know her before I joined the school committee. So I just remember that how she warmly welcomed me as a new member, that really gave me the comfort of as a new member. And throughout the years, this year, I saw her dedication and her belief in every student, and she, and she has, she's affirmed believing every student can achieve their, what they need to achieve through the consistent working out, working. So I really see that, how she is really, and she never give out any opportunity to work, more opportunity for the students to, so they can shine, and I really see that. And she demonstrated that the, so I really admire that she, I, I look at that as she was on the committee for three years, and we have three superintendent in the past three years. I'm not sure if I admire that experience, but I really admire that, her dedication and her devotion for her service. So, and I really, yeah, just even though she's not here, I really want to thank her for her, for her service. And I also want to congratulate her son, that he made it to the desire college that he, he's, like, he dreamed, and so I want to congratulate her. And you may, some of that, I want to mention that one thing that you, some of that you may not know, which, Eileen and I might, and Eileen's from mainland China, I'm from Taiwan, and politically, we are totally contradict. And, but we work together. So I kind of, that, I kind of wish that the, we're working together and throughout, and we're, when we talk, sometime when we talk, we're joking about this all the time, and this is, you know, in this current political environment, I just hope the spirit, this working together spirit would continue to build our community, committee as a model, and, you know, we're building our future citizens in our community, so we really think that the kind of spirit would keep going. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So I also met with Eileen on a number of occasions for the same purpose that Diane did, but Diane put it more articulate manner than I would. But I just wanted to say that I also appreciated the conversation, and I think we developed a friendship through that conversation. And just because she's not on the committee doesn't mean we can't continue to have that conversation.
And last, but absolutely not least, I want to welcome John Peterson to school committee this evening. Our newest, our newest member, sort of.
Thank you. I am thankful that the voters of Acton have provided me a second opportunity to serve on the school committee. I hope that my background as both the newest, and in at least two dimensions, the oldest member of the committee, will provide an expanded perspective on our collective effort to continue a tradition of educational excellence in the Acton, Boxboro schools. As a feature of my humanity, while I am capable of doing good work, I am also capable of making mistakes. I have made many over the years. Our school system is no different. While we have done and will continue to do great things, we will make mistakes. For each of us in the regional school district, students, teachers, administrators, superintendents, and school committee members. As we recognize mistakes, we need to acknowledge them. Then we need to discuss them with our colleagues, work to understand them, and correct the processes and decisions which led us to error. We need to conduct some of that discussion in our school committee meetings. The expectation that we set for students, that they should learn from their mistakes, is the same expectation we must set for ourselves. We must model other behaviors for our students. The job of a school committee member is complex and can at times feel overwhelming. The same could be said about the jobs of our administrators and teachers. But these jobs also have the potential to contribute to the quality and meaningfulness of the lives of our students. While we should be honest about the challenges and frustrations we feel, we must also share our sense of accomplishment built on the joy of hard work. And as we hope that our students have some fun each day, I hope that we'll have some fun in these meetings. Let the work and the fun begin.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to public participation. If there's anyone here who has anything they want to talk to us about, not on the agenda, please step forward at this time. Seeing no one, we will move on to item four. Michael Chang is here, our student rep, to give us their latest update from the high school.
Nice, new mic, fancy. Anyways, I think I mentioned, or I think I mentioned this last meeting, but student elections are coming up the week after April vacation, I believe it's the Wednesday. Elections, nominations, speeches, all that jazz has already been taken care of. We moved over to actually record speeches, is my understanding, a couple of years ago. Not sure why that occurred. I'm not sure I want to ask. Anyways, positions up for election class leader, which usually garners the most interest, student council, ARSAAC, which actually has a presentation up next, and this position, Mr. Representative to the school committee. Hope, I think we'll see some new faces, but I actually don't know. We don't get the candidates in advance. Okay. Also, I think Mr. Light actually has PC up in his superintendent update, so I'll leave that for him. This week, something a little, little new, well missed, I think it's, the administration had a wellness-themed week, was a couple of events, some of them that, that were really popular and sensible, some of them, and I'm speaking as an individual, were a little bit bizarre, just to give you a taste of, we had therapy dogs, which are always, which are always pretty popular. Then we had No One Eats Alone Day, we had some wellness-themed senior projects, which are part of, I guess you'd call them the English curriculum. On the other hand, we also had some No Cell Phone Day on Wednesday, where you could be rewarded, I believe it's with a popsicle, if you did not use your cellphone throughout the day, and had your teachers sign off on that. We found out today that they bought more popsicles than they handed out. So they ended up handing out a couple hundred, I believe, some of those, of those fro-pops for free, for free anyways, today. I'm not sure that's how they intended it. Anyways, something else that I don't think was present in previous years, Mr. Arsenault's band migrated to the English and Social Studies wing, and turned into a marching pep band on Monday for eighth period, disrupting the East Wing very much. But this does, I guess, reinforce their commitment towards wellness, which obviously we've talked a lot about in this body for the administration. And capping that week off is all, it's actually become, has become a tradition now, Health and Wellness Day for the Friday before break, led by the Health, led by the PE department, where staff, teachers basically let their students out onto leery, and there's a lot of activities set up there. And it's always a really nice end to vacation since, which also means that much of the work actually, in terms of assignments, tasks, et cetera, was yesterday and today. It's actually a pretty late day for the Friday before break relative to other breaks. And with that, I'll leave it to ARSAAC.
Thank you, Michael. We have invited tonight Christina, is it, is it?
Ly.
Ly, Christina Ly. She is the Regional State Student Advisory Council rep. So she's going to tell us about what she does.
So thank you guys for having me here tonight. So I'll just tell you guys a little bit about what ARSAAC is, what I've personally done, and just some of the most important aspects of ARSAAC. So for you, those of you guys who don't know, ARSAAC stands for Regional Student Advisory Council. It's basically like this larger student council that meets within one region. So our region is actually the central Massachusetts region, so we're called SimmerSAC. And what we kind of do is just meet with the different schools, so that includes charter schools, any private schools, obviously all the public schools. And it's really just about knowing each other, and then having this open dialogue between these different types of schools, so that we can report back to our own student government and just update them on what's going on, and how we can like really help each other out. So the way that ARSAAC usually works is we have a couple chair members who kind of run the entire meeting, and then from there, we have, I'd say, it ranges from 50 to 100 students, like, depending on what time of the year who comes to the meetings. We split into different committees, just based on what we think is important. So usually, we're talking about civics education, mental health, and most recently, we've been talking a lot about school climate and culture. So that's the committee that I'm actually on, I'm the chair of that. And one of the things that we thought was really important to talk about was how students feel at school. So we kind of narrowed it down to a couple different things. It was how students interact with each other, and how students interact with teachers, as well as how they interact with administration. And it was really important for us to focus on that, because I think we recognized in our committee, just coming from different backgrounds, we had different relationships with our teachers. So a lot of the students who went to like the charter schools got to know their teachers a lot better, and they had a lot to say about that. Whereas obviously, I'm coming from a school with 2,000 kids, which is sometimes like four times more than some of those other smaller schools. So I do have a different perspective on what student-to-student relations can be like at a large school like AB. So what we kind of decided to do was just to get some responses from all the different regions. So in total, I think there are about six regions in Massachusetts. So we created this survey that basically asked questions in the form of like a statement. So we would say, how comfortable do you feel talking to a teacher about certain issues? How comfortable do you feel approaching administration about other issues? How comfortable do you feel with your fellow students? Stuff like that. And we would ask all the students to rate it, kind of like if they believe in this a lot, if it's neutral, or if they don't believe in it at all. And it took a lot of time to really just know what type of questions we wanted to ask, because we wanted to make sure these questions were applicable to all of the schools. And in the end, we got 600 responses from all over the state, which was really cool for us to see. And in the end, we decided to put that together into this guide that we're still working on. So what we really want to do is take these responses and take the advice that those students have given us, put it into this one packet, and give it out to all the schools who are looking for student opinions and student voices. So what I've really taken away from this experience is teacher and student interaction. So some of the other things, like student-to-student interactions, and there were a lot of questions about mental health, I think personally, AB does really well. What I thought was really interesting was that a lot of the other students focused on how students interact with teachers. So there were suggestions such as teachers hosting study periods after school, or just the different ways in which teachers could be more approachable. So I really want to take that aspect of that project and try and bring it back to student council, to see how we can work on something like that. And yeah, overall, that's just what we do in the school climate and culture. In the other committees, they also do similar projects, where we, we design a goal in the beginning, and then a plan on how to follow through with that goal, and in the end, we just kind of check in and pass it on to the next year's representatives. Yep, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to item five, superintendent's update.
So first, Michael, I can't imagine that you said becoming a class leader is more appealing than becoming a school committee rep. I just, I think it must be a narrow focus. I'm sure if only they had the experience, they'd change their minds. So a few different updates for you, you know, and I actually would love some feedback from you. I started the year by actually sending out the superintendent's update in written format earlier before the meeting, and then shortly after, I realized that by the time I got to the meeting, oftentimes the information was outdated. So then I pushed it a little closer to the meeting, but then as I did that, I felt like you had already read anything I was going to say, so I wondered why I was saying it. So I've since moved to kind of giving a verbal update and providing you with a written copy at the meeting, which we then send out to our families. So I'm interested in feedback on, on what works best for you, but this is where we're at today. I just also wanted to take a moment and thank the citizens of Acton for the recent support of our school budget and warrant articles at town meeting. It really just reaffirmed for me the value that the community holds for the public schools, and that was really a humbling experience, tremendous support from the citizens. So thank you so much to everyone who was at town meeting and supported our work. You know, and as Diane said a moment ago, in Belichick fashion, you know, on to Boxboro. The, congratulations to the performing arts groups, and I'm stealing a little bit of George's thunder when he gives you this update, but I told him ahead of time I would. But we were just named in the 2019 Best Communities for Music Education by the National Music Merchant Association. We are one of 14 districts across the state and one of 623 nationally to receive that recognition. So it's a huge honor, so congratulations to all of our faculty and students in the performing arts groups, and all of the parents who support all of that work. I also want to congratulate Presidium Circus, they just won the state finals for the Massachusetts Drama Guild. This is the group's first state finals win in 23 years, so that's a tremendous accomplishment. And speaking of tremendous accomplishments, I also want to recognize some students from the Blanchard Memorial School Band for their recent gold medal at the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association, fondly known as MICHA. That is the group's 12th consecutive gold medal performance. So that is a tremendous honor, so congratulations to everyone involved in that. On a little bit more of a somber note and serious note, I am sad to announce that our Special Education Director Pam Smith accepted another position as a Director of Special Education with the Lester Public Schools beginning July 1st. She's done some fantastic work for us across the district over the last three years, and I know we all as an administrative team appreciate all of the work that she's done on behalf of our students. Dawn and I spoke at length about this, there's a very limited pool of special education directors in the best of circumstances, in the world we live in today, from an employment perspective. We're in a unique position where we're into the month of, well into the month of April, and by the time we posted and started interviewing, we're really talking about another three weeks. If we continue to try and hire someone full-time, A, I don't think the candidate pool is big enough, but we're also already behind a number of very similar districts in hiring the same position, who are well into the interview process. I don't think that would be a successful search. So Dawn and I decided together that we are going to post, or we have posted for an interim special education director for next year. We're also in the process of doing some special education program evaluations, to really take a look at how our special education program is organized across the district. Right now, we're looking at the elementary learning centers, and how we can work with those over time. But we also want to take a broader look at our programming, and particularly the leadership structure, that we want to be able to support that moving forward. We don't think this, a short timeline is a good decision-making window for that, so we want to buy ourselves a little bit of time. So the process that we'd like to use, we're going to hire an interim director for 1920. I anticipate that over the first six months of that person's tenure, we'll do some program evaluation, really take a hard look at the structures we want, so that we can go out to post and be one of the first districts to post for the next cycle in 2021. So I just wanted to give you that update, it's very important. I was talking to CPAC last night, so I also let that group know, and have been in touch with the leadership there, just about where we're at and our intent going forward. Building project update, the feasibility study is continuing to evolve. Over the last few weeks, architects have actually been meeting in focus groups with our faculty from all of our schools, so Douglas Gates and the preschool, in order to really deeply understand how teachers want to use the different spaces within the building, so that as they design that, they're really listening with teacher voice in mind. Simultaneous to that, they're using that information to work with our administrative team, to develop the overall floor plan of the school, and take a look at how the school will be organized at a macro level. The current design that we're working with has, it's a three-floor design, and the way it works is all the common spaces are on the first floor, so some administrative offices, there's a learning commons, some project room type areas, cafeteria, gymnasiums, things like that, and the preschool are on the first floor. And then the second and third floors, each are dedicated to the classroom levels of each of the two schools. We made that decision because it was the one way in which both principals felt like it prioritized this notion of keeping the school community together, and it kept that identity of each of the schools unique. So that's the design we're working with. I put some links into the update for you, and as we send this out tomorrow to the broader group of families, they'll also be able to take a look at the floor plans for the building, as well as actually see some of the beginnings of renderings of what the school inside and outside might look like. So I think that'll be exciting for people to take a look at. We do have a number of submissions coming up. We are actually, next week, submitting the floor plans, and I made up a new term in doing this, it's called an in-process floor plan. That is not an official MSBA term, that's my term. But we're submitting that overall floor plan to MSBA next week, and we're scheduling a conference call with them to receive some feedback on that after the vacation break. On May 8th, we will be submitting our revised preferred schematic report in anticipation of the Facilities Assessment Subcommittee meeting at the end of May, and then the full board meeting at the end of June. So stay tuned for more on that. I wanted to give you a little bit of a hiring update as well. So we have posted all of our positions for, starting next fall, and we, those have been open for the last several weeks. We also have many hiring teams that are formed and are currently in the process of interviewing candidates. I will say that we rely very heavily on the work of our school-based administrators and faculty in terms of vetting candidates and recommending those candidates forward to us for positions. And I just want to make sure I thank everyone involved, because it's a tremendous amount of time to, to run those interview teams. I also wanted to just give you a little update, because one of our district goals this year was to increase the diversity of our educator workforce, and I wanted to give you a little snapshot of some recent actions that we've taken to do so. Last month, Marie Alteri and I sent a letter to our district-wide staff about the need to increase the diversity, and our goals in doing so, to make sure that all of our teachers across the district, as we entered the hiring process, and they were thinking of participating in hiring committees, understood that this was a district-wide goal, that we're in particular looking for candidates of color, but also to just generally increase the diversity of our workforce. We also, with that letter, provided some resources and sample interview questions, and I'll thank Deb Bookus for forwarding those interview questions to us. And I did receive a number of emails from faculty across the district, really appreciative of seeing some different questions. We understand that we're not always going to be able to hire an educator that increases our diversity, but the one thing we laid out is if we can't find an educator with varied backgrounds, the one thing we need to do is make sure that we hire allies within that process, that really value an inclusive environment. So that was a priority for us. We've also been reaching out to some of our local colleges of education, including those that have prioritized increasing the number of educators of color entering the workforce. We have started a new partnership with an employment app called Handshake, which we have learned particularly targets some of the historically black colleges. So that's been a positive, we're interested to see how that pans out. We don't have data yet back, but I'm excited to see if we can get anything from that. And then I also was really fortunate that I received a number of emails back from faculty across the district. I ended up meeting with a small group of high school teachers, who just wanted to talk all things about the workforce diversity that we have. It was a great conversation, they shared some of the resources. One of the faculty members had already reached out to the Boston University School of Education to learn what they have that could benefit us, and it was just neat to be able to send a goal out and see how our educators actually mobilized around moving that forward in a positive way. So thank you to everyone for the work on that. And then I want to end by also doing another bit of special recognition. Those of you, I think everyone was at Acton Town Meeting, but if you weren't there the second night, one of our school resource officers, Detective Mike Araklio, was recognized by the town of Acton and received the Joseph A. Lally Public Service Award for Public Safety. And then also, simultaneous to that, Detective Keith Campbell also received the Massachusetts Juvenile Police Officers Association Award for their 2019 Exceptional Service Award. We are so fortunate to have both of those gentlemen working for the students in our schools. They are tremendous asset to everything that we do, and I just wanted to make sure I recognized and thanked them. So with that said, thank you, and I will, if anyone has questions or thoughts.
Does anyone have any questions or thoughts? Michael?
Because I wasn't late, but before I posed a question to Peter, right, so on to, first of all, I want to welcome John to our team. So I'm looking forward to work with you, and also other school committee members. And also, I want to thank Eileen for her last three years' volunteer service to our community. So she did put a lot of time and efforts to it. So I want to say thank you, Eileen. And now I want to pose a question to Peter. So given that special education director change, so are you expecting any like, you know, budget amendment for this position, or you think, you know, the current budget will cover that?
No, the interim position will be roughly the same pay scale as the special education director would have been placed on.
Yep, John?
I have one comment and a question.
I have one comment and a question. The comment relates to the hiring of new teachers, and particularly the challenge of onboarding new teachers with limited experience, so there has been some history in the district that that has not always been successful, so I hope everybody's involved in the process realizes, just like starting up new school committee members or new superintendents, that if we're going to be successful, a good effort, you know, right at the starting line is very important, and so I hope a special effort is made with respect to whatever teachers we bring in with limited experience this next year. The second, you know, question, and it need not be answered in full right now, is the question of, you know, as part of the element of diversity, is the question of how is the overall teaching experience of our workforce changing over time? So obviously, every year, we have very experienced teachers retire, we bring in less experienced teachers, and depending on how that process works out, we could wind up with, on average, a more experienced or a less experienced educational workforce, and so at some point in the future, I'd like to understand how that has changed over the last few years, or if it's basically been stable.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move right on to item six. I've changed the order of the agenda a little bit, so we're going to be doing some, the subcommittee and liaison reports now. Policy, there's a whole section, as you probably noticed, on the agenda for policy, so we'll skip that for now, and we'll move on to, or did you want to, did you have something to say? Okay, okay. Yes, I do.
So, I didn't report on budget last time. Do you want me to do last times also? Okay, sorry, I wasn't prepared, because I thought I was later in the agenda. So it happens, okay, sorry. Okay, so the first, we met on March 19th, discussed the 2019 budget, and it looks like, and this may have changed, so Dave, you can jump in. Yep, but it looks like we're about approximately one and a half million under budget. In the 2020 budget process, we're using $690,000 from E&amp;D, and planning on $1 million to go into the capital stabilization fund. And then, at that meeting, we discussed developing policies, one around the reserves, use of reserves and level of reserves, and one related to the capital stabilization fund. So, we met this past Tuesday, and we worked on developing two new policies related, one related to the reserves, put together some language and discussed levels and so forth. And the second one is focused on how we're going to, how we would like to fund the capital stabilization fund, as well as how we will use those funds. So both of these started in budget. So my understanding is, they were shared on Wednesday night with the Capital Planning Committee, and Capital Planning gave some feedback. I'm sorry, I know, I'm going to ruin everybody's night. And then, policy met this morning, and we went over in detail both of these, both of these policy meetings, both of these policies. We're not ready to present them to the full school committee yet, what we'd like to do is take them to the Acton FinCom and the Boxborough FinCom. The next Boxborough FinCom meeting is April 21st, Monday night, and then the next Acton FinCom meeting is the 22nd on Tuesday night. At those meetings, we'll be asking for direct feedback from both the finance committees.
22nd and 23rd?
Oh, sorry, 22nd, 23rd, Monday, Tuesday. Boxborough Monday, Acton Tuesday. And then, the, both of the policies will go back to budget, and will then go back to policy, Subcommittee, and then we'll bring them hopefully on the April, I don't have the date, April, May 8th, though, okay, so the May 8th School Committee meeting for a first read. So please jump in if I missed anything.
It's May 9th.
Oh, there you go, May 9th.
Everybody get, everybody get all that? There's going to be a test after this.
Yes. Yeah. But I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them, or save them for later.
Oh, John?
So, the question of a stabilization fund is, you know, in part related to what is the volatility that you might experience that would cause you to need a stabilization fund for whatever purpose? So, a dimension of that volatility is uncertainty about future revenues, and there are also obviously uncertainties about future needs. What do you think the policy needs to do to address the question of uncertainty in future revenues?
I think that, based on our discussion at our Budget Policy Meeting, and at Policy this morning, the stabilization fund needs to really kind of focus in on two areas. One is a place where we need to be beginning to save for repairs that we know are coming up in the future, such as a new roof on the junior high in five, seven years, I'm just using that as an example, because that is not something that we can budget out of a budget in one year's, obviously, in one year's budget cycle. And then the second piece is keeping some funds in for unforeseen emergency boiler blows, things like that, that we also need to, we need to address within the regular school year. Does that answer your question?
So, just to rephrase, so, both of those things relate to uncertainty associated with needs, or the need to smooth demand over time, as opposed to revenue uncertainty? So there is nothing in the stabilization?
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, so, the intention of the stabilization fund is, is to be able to provide for those both long-term planned projects that are outside of the scope of one year, and the emergency projects. The funding mechanism of that is something that we're discussing as part of the policy, but it doesn't, it's not something that we're looking at that would be considered on a yearly basis, so from a budgeting standpoint, it's something that we would fund as needed, we would target a percentage of our regular operating budget, but we wouldn't be seeing us sort of putting regularly funds into that, aside from maybe some of the things that we're planning for long-term work. So in terms of revenues, it's somewhat independent of revenues, because it collects funds for the sole purpose of capital projects.
Okay, Michael?
I assume that, you know, we will have a floor for it, right? That's what we discuss in the Subcommittee, so when we discuss the policy, okay. So as long as we maintain that, so, you know, we should be good.
A floor? A floor? Anyway, okay. Do you want to jump in?
Sure, just to add one, a couple of quick things to that, you know, there's a couple stipulations in the policy that the administration proposed, so the general intent of the stabilization fund is either to pay for capital projects for the district, or the debt service of those projects. So, that affords us a little bit of flexibility, I think, I'll just speak to the revenue side for a second. I could foresee a couple of different challenges in a fiscal year, and I think of some of the worst-case scenarios in my mind, is kind of what I thought of as we were trying to draft this. Say we had a year where there was an extraordinary budget shortfall anticipated, and we were not going to be able to fund a lot of the district's programs at a level that we felt was sufficient, and we have this debt service that we've taken out of bond for. By having the intent of the stabilization fund flexible, to be able to pick up debt service, it does provide us the flexibility on a short-term basis to be able to assume the cost of debt service, which then obviously frees up operating budget expenses to pay for things like teachers and staff, so I think that's one area. I think also, the Subcommittee's tried to look broadly at the intended uses of the stabilization funds, because there are also times where, again, if you run into a series of lean operating budget years, if you have sufficient reserves within a stabilization fund, then you're obviously able to transfer your cost of the capital program into stabilization for a short period of time. I think one of the, Dave and I have talked about this a lot, that one of the intents of a stabilization fund is just to stabilize, and so we know that on a regular basis, some years, revenues will be higher than what we would anticipate, other years, they're going to be lower than what we would anticipate. I think the general idea behind this is to make sure that we don't ever end up in dips and ruts, or in a stretch of years where we stop funding capital at a level that continues the program.
I think that, do you want to give a report from, from the capital Subcommittee?
Yes, it'll be very quick. We discussed the aforementioned policies, and reviewed the work that is planned for this coming summer as part of the FY20 budget, all of which is moving along quite nicely.
ALG, do you want to give that report? We just met briefly April 1st.
Oh, yeah, that was just to discuss an open meeting law complaint, and that was 15 minutes worth of talking about the open meeting law complaint, that's about it.
How about BLF? You haven't met? Okay, any other liaison positions want to report out? Okay, moving on to item seven. We are going to now convene a meeting within a meeting, we need to hold a public hearing, so noting the time, I call the FY20 Acton-Boxborough Regional School District, Massachusetts Department of Education School Choice Program Public Hearing to order. We will hear from Marie, and then we will adjourn, and then vote when we're back in regular session.
The Acton-Boxborough Regional School District has participated in School Choice in a very minimal way for many years. We currently have 23 students remaining in the district who have come in under the School Choice Program. Due to overcrowding and class size issues and space, we have, we, the school committee has not voted to take new School Choice students for over a dozen years at this point, and we are recommending that we continue to do the same thing. We have one incoming sibling of current choice families coming to the district next year, so the recommendation is that the school committee vote to continue to participate in the School Choice Program, but only open up one seat at kindergarten, and then, once you do that, siblings have a preference.
Any questions? Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn the public? This is, okay, all in favor? Or do I have to do a roll call vote? Does anybody know? It's just a majority vote? Okay, so all in favor again? Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, we're now back in session. Do I hear a motion to approve the School Choice Program participation?
I move that the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee continue the School Choice Program and limit openings to one seat in kindergarten for the 2019-2020 school year.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Finally, item eight, reports. We have invited Juliana Schneider here from Miriam to present the school improvement, the school improvement plan for the Miriam Elementary School, it's a bit of a tongue twister, and then following, we will hear from David James on the Physical Education Department update, and then George Arsenal on the Performing Arts Department update. So, welcome Juliana.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and also with me is Bryant Ametrono, who's our new Assistant Principal at Miriam School this year, and together, we will share with you about our school improvement plan. Before we share about our school improvement plan, my hope this evening was actually to share a little bit about my entry plan this year, since I am coming close to the end of my first year as Principal at Miriam School. And so, this year, beginning in August, I started by meeting with administrators across the district, as well as teachers, the custodial staff, our cafeteria workers, every staff member of Miriam School, our classroom assistants and Special Education assistants, parents, and then once school, some of that happened during the fall as well, and then as well students. My goal in meeting with all of these people, of course, was to build relationships, but also to listen to the things that people shared that were important to them. These conversations were all framed with three questions, and the questions were, what do you believe the strengths of Miriam School are, what do you believe that the opportunities or challenges are, and then what are your expectations of me as the Principal of Miriam? In addition to meeting with all of those different groups, we also, together, started all of our committee work this year. Miriam School has a lot of committees, because we have a lot of shared leadership, and each of those committee meetings started with those same three questions, and that was an amazing opportunity for us, not just to get to see things holistically for Miriam, but also within the functioning of each of our small groups, and from those meetings, we were able to look closely at how the group was functioning, how we could improve things, and we have done quite a bit of work around that, including, just an example, is our child study team, and we ended up reaching out to our larger staff, and we've met in a subgroup in order to think through how we can better support teachers in supporting children, so it's really been beneficial to the work that we have done this year. So these are some themes that came out of the entry plan finding, through findings through talking with many people. The first theme is around community. Miriam School was founded with many structures in place that support community and collaboration, and community members value these, the community that we have. Some of those structures include looping, community days and theme days, assistance in classrooms, collaboration time, and one of the pieces that came out about, about in this theme, was not just how much people value these structures, but also the work that we need to do in order to maintain them. Takes a tremendous amount of work on behalf of teachers, as well as on behalf of parents, and so one of the things that we have talked about is building capacity among our teachers, and especially as our teachers retire, and we bring on new teachers, how do we instill those values in our new, new teachers to be part of committee work, and part of these structures that make our school who we are. Volunteerism is also something that came out of that, we've volunteered, we've had a harder time getting parent volunteers over the years, and we really depend on volunteers for our community events, so that's something that came out of it. Another theme was around curriculum. We've done a lot of work around curriculum. Miriam has always done a tremendous amount of work around curriculum, being a project-based learning school, developing projects has always been important. Since I had started there, we've done a lot of work around revitalizing those projects, and when I started five years ago, we brought in outside consultants to help us with that. Since that time, we've really worked on training our teachers on a methodology for curriculum mapping and project development, so we've been able to build that capacity within our teaching staff, and that has been valued and appreciated by the teachers. There were questions that came out of that theme around collaboration. Miriam School has a model for collaboration between and among general educators, but there's definitely a desire from both general educators and special educators to have more collaboration built in between those groups, so that's something that we're thinking about. Something else that came out of talking with parents, talking with children, and talking with teachers, is how much people value the attention we give to the whole child, and the way that children feel known by the adults, as well as by one another in our school. One of the things that we've done this year around that piece in particular is our skipping stones committee. Did some work at faculty meetings, close to the beginning of the year, where every staff member identified three students who they felt they would like to build a deeper connection with, and then we have revisited that work throughout the year, checked, set goals, checked in with one another to think about whether we have built that connection with those children, and what else we could do to do that, so that every, so that we're making sure that we're connecting with every child. Parent communication came out as a theme in my entry findings. Last year, when we moved towards having less homework at a school level, parents felt less connected to what was happening in the classrooms, and that came out at the elementary level. And so one of the things that we have done this year is classroom teachers are sending at least monthly updates. at least monthly updates, curriculum updates, as to what's going on in the classroom in order for parents to feel more connected in that way. Student leadership came out, and children just wanting to be leaders in the school, which is wonderful. And we do have some opportunities, and it's also an opportunity to think about what more we could do. Something we started doing this year immediately is we have our sixth graders now hosting our all-school meetings, which take place every Friday, so they meet throughout the week. They go and work with teachers and other students, and put together the agenda, they lead all the technology, and then they host the meeting. They like to tell jokes for transitions and other things, so it's been really great, and certainly has brought a new energy to our all-school meetings. I just put on here a couple of slides around student voice. I think the most fun part of the entry plan was going into every single classroom and asking them what they love about our school, what they wish about our school, and you can just read for yourself some of the things that came up. It was, it really stood out to me how much they love to learn, whether it's reading or math, the insight, the excitement and the engagement that they have around learning, and how much they love their teachers really stood out to me. There's a lot of talk around ice cream and longer recess and other things, planting more flowers and painting the school, so lots of student ideas. And then, these were just things that they had in terms of suggestions for me, and I want to highlight the last one. We aren't, well, this, these are kids' voices, but we aren't just taught to be kind, but it actually works. And one little boy in a class shared that he felt like, no matter, even when they made mistakes or whatnot, they always knew what it meant to be kind, and that kids pay attention to one another and they include one another, so it was notable. I like the pay the bills, do principal work. So, those are some of the things that will inform our work at a school level as we think through setting goals next year for our school improvement plan, and we have incorporated this into our school council work together as we go through that process, writing next year a school improvement plan. So, these are, these here are the goals that we have from our school improvement plan that we've been working on this year. Continuing our curriculum work, the implementation of our social thinking curriculum. And lastly, Miriam's school improvement plan has always separated out our theme. We have a theme every single year, and this year, our theme was water, so we did some work implementing our theme there. So, Bryant is going to talk with you quite a bit about the work that we've done around curriculum this year, but I think it's, and I also shared with you some of the work that we had done leading up to this point. We had a lot of different pieces that were sort of in the abstract before this year. We had protocols that we had made to develop essential questions and look at the standards and standards bundle, how to make consensus decision makings at, at grade levels, et cetera. And so, we had all of these pieces, and we had done all of this work, and this year, we were really able to bring some of the pieces together, and Bryant is going to talk about that with you.
So, first, I just want to say thank you for welcoming me into AB and Miriam. I've really enjoyed being here and working with Juliana. It's been really great this year, so thank you. So, as Juliana said, around her entry plan, we learned that we really want to focus on some concrete obstacles, again, in some of the curriculum work. And this past summer, during R and D with the Curriculum Committee, we totally revamped the infrastructure of, of all the resources by using Google Team Drive. A lot, I know a lot of people are using the Team Drives now, but it really shaped the way that we're able to collaborate with each other and get all of those resources that Juliana was talking about before, like the project templates, curriculum maps, links to the district resources, and all of the, all the standards that we have there. That way, it's all in one centralized location, and it just enabled our teachers to grow out their curriculum map so much more this year. A theme over the summer was this idea of an empty chair, and that teacher that might not be there, but might be there in the future. And we have three retirees and three new teachers coming in next year, and we feel pretty confident that we've done a lot of work to support those teachers as they join our team. Through our entry plan, we also realized that teachers felt inhibited by the physical space of the curriculum closet. It was, it was a mess. And it was, it's a product of looping, not being with your materials for, for two years, also having the shared materials. So, we took it on, and the picture that we have up here, it shows the curriculum closet, and we totally worked on clearing out things that were outdated, didn't need, I mean, I threw out some tape recorders that must have been from the seventies. Actually, some, some classrooms actually took them to take them apart and see the parts inside, which was fun, too. Just last week, a teacher was in there, and I saw her walking out with, with a bin of materials, and she was just had the brightest smile on her face. She was like, "I just felt so much happier going in to get my materials." And it was, it's a real obstacle that we were, that was challenging for our teachers, and we're taking it on and putting in some more structures to help with the looping side. Science has been kind of a major theme this year also, and I come from a background of teaching science, and we've been able to really work on now developing out our projects. In the past, Miriam's done a lot around projects, and not as much around science, but now we're really starting to push science. And we started, and I put up this, this Venn diagram with math, the STE and the ELA, kind of showing how our project work is really integrated with, throughout all the disciplines. And we started this year with professional learning. Kate Schibler, one of the, one of our five, six teachers, who's also one of the science leads, along with Jean, the science curriculum coordinator, and myself, we, we just had teachers start looking at the eight practices, understanding what those eight science practices are, and where they're implementing those in their classroom today, because we wanted to show them that you are doing these things, but just maybe with some small tweaks, we really enhance those, which would really enhance the student learning. And then, going from there, we're starting to build out our, our projects going forward with science.
So, our next goal was around implementing the social thinking curriculum, and this was the second year of that goal. And the social thinking curriculum is a research-based curriculum which teaches children many social competencies, including social self-awareness, perspective-taking, self-regulation, and social emotional understanding, and many others that you could go deeper with. Carolyn Imperato, our school psychologist, and Katie Turner, our school counselor, have led us in a lot of the work that we have done across the staff, and it has really given us a common language in helping to support our students. There are four main things that we have focused on over the past two years. One is whole-body listening, another is social behavior mapping, looking at the size of a problem and how we respond to those problems, and then the zones of regulation, where children really become aware of their bodies, their feelings, and then how they're responding to those. And you can see an example of a toolbox that hangs on one teacher's wall, which includes the strategies in terms of how you might respond to certain feelings. We have done, we've had, so we've had, every classroom is teaching the lessons that support those, and then we're using tools to respond to children when things come up. And in addition to that, in March, we had a community conversation with our families, and we actually had a better turnout than we've had at any of our community conversations since I've been at Miriam, so that was really exciting. And we have also done a lot of communication and posted the resources for parents to use at home, as well as literature connections for a lot of these different social competencies. So, this is the last year of that goal. We will certainly maintain social thinking as part of what we, the ways that we support children, and we will also support our new teachers in bringing that curriculum to their classroom as well. This is our very well-attended community conversation, as well as some teachers working together, sharing ideas of what they're doing in their own classrooms across grade levels in order to, so that they can help one another with those different lessons. The last goal that was on our school improvement plan is really our theme, which is water, and Bryant is going to talk a little bit about the different things we've done with water. In the past, we've had really abstract themes. Last year, we, it was resilience, prior to that gratitude, group skills, wellness, and so this year, in coming up with a theme, we thought we'd go with something a little bit more concrete, which actually came out of a wellness conversation, and it's been really fun to do something that connects to learning in all of the classrooms as well.
What's been really nice about the water theme, it's really manifested itself in actually integrating into the classroom with pretty much everywhere. The first, the bottom picture is from our Parker Damon Building Makerspace, and we started, and myself along with the technology integration specialist, Megan Bowers, she and I put together a little professional learning for teachers on how to use a Makerspace, but with the theme of water, with a steam challenge around building a boat. And so, teachers saw how like we can integrate this right there. We've had theme days and community days. One of our theme days, we invited a bunch of high school students. The Presidium Circus did some improv, and it was all around water, maybe you got stuck in the rain, or you're swimming on a boat. We also had some athletes. We had the high school varsity, was it hockey captains came, and they were awesome. They did such a great job with telling us how water affects their, their sport, not just, they drink a lot of water, and the goalie has a water bottle in the back, but how the ice is formed, and how their edges, and how the Zamboni works, and students really enjoyed it, and it was really great to see those high school students in a, in a leadership capacity. We also had our theme night this year. It was, instead of, in the past, we've had maybe a literacy night or a math night, we did it as a family theme night, and we invited families to come in and do various activities. We had a steam challenge, we had a mural painting, which is that background, which is up on our, our third floor of our building. Michelle Beck helped with one of our retired art teachers put together this beautiful mural around water. We had a poetry slam that Juliana helped, helped put together, and students putting water poems, and they shared that at an all-school meeting. Also, throughout the all-school meeting this year, students have really taken on the theme of water and bringing in some math. We have one of those water bottle fillers, and they're seeing how many water bottles we've been saving throughout the year, and telling water-related jokes, and it's been a really fun theme.
So, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for us?
Michael.
First of all, thank you. This is a great presentation. I did see some very good thing there, but I, if you can go back to the second, your second slide. So, I have a question about the third bullet, attention to the whole child. So, I'm curious, you know, how do you define this, what's your definition for the whole child?
So, I think the whole child is looking at every part of the child, not just in terms of their academic performance, but also in terms of where they're at emotionally, how they are connecting with peers, how they're connecting with adults, how happy they are on a daily basis, all the different things that impact them. And so, at Miriam School, we do a lot of work around teaching children social emotional skills in, in that piece of things, but also, there's a great emphasis put through the community on the relationships between children and between adults and children. And so, I think through that, we really try to get to know children and get to know the whole child.
So, what I like, and I'm a Miriam parent, so I could preach into the choir, what I really like hearing, though, is that students kind of taking ownership, the students as leaders, and I think that's a very important part of, of, of learning, is taking responsibility for whatever it may be. So, kudos to Miriam.
Thank you.
John.
Let me just follow up a little bit on what Paul just said. You know, I think the goal of parenting sadly is to have children become independent and be not needful of their parents. And the same thing is obviously true of education. The goal is to produce independent learners, so I think everything that heads in that direction is, is, is great stuff. I'll make a statement to expose my bias. Yes, I have some biases, and then I'll ask a couple of questions. I have always supported elementary school choice in Acton, and I support it today in the Acton-Boxborough Elementary System. I am glad that there are schools with looping, and that we have schools centered on project-based learning, as well as schools with a more traditional approach. Choice allows each elementary school to pursue educational models that they feel represent the best they can offer. Over time, it allows the AB system to identify, test, and disseminate best practices. Choice allows each family to choose a school community that they feel will best support their children. Family choices will reflect many factors: school philosophy, proximity to the school, and representation of friends and neighbors. In the end, both the educational leadership in the school and the families make a free choice. I believe that commitment to an educational program and to a school community results in better outcomes. And for people who want to look at this issue, avoid looking for, you know, school choice in education, but if you look at it instead in the context of freedom of choice and impact on work performance, I think you'll see that when people choose paths that they believe will be successful, they are more successful, and there's compelling evidence. Having said all of that, the school district and the school committee must monitor the performance of students in the junior high school to make sure that the schools are providing comparable, not identical, preparation for secondary education. And so, I have two questions. The first question is, what is your role in evaluating the performance of Miriam students in the junior high school relative to those from other elementary schools?
So, first of all, each of the elementary schools are teaching the standards, and all of the work that we do around project development, we are starting from the standards. We're developing our essential questions that way. We're thinking about where we want children to end up based on that. And so, our assessment tools are aligned to those standards, whether it be rubrics or portfolios, more traditional assessments, et cetera. So, that is one piece that connects us to all of the other schools in terms of that comparable experience. The other thing is, is that we use benchmark assessments. We use the Fanta-Sin Penel Benchmark Assessment to assess literacy. Every year, we use Cathy Richardson to assess mathematics, and other assessment tools that are similar to assessment tools across the district, and then we use that data in order to ensure that children are learning all of the skills that they need academically. At this point in time, we don't have defined criteria for the social emotional piece, but that's something I think that could certainly be explored. And I know that there's other work being done at a district level, looking at data, not necessarily looking at schools in comparison to one another, but rather looking at similar students and subgroups, et cetera, in order to get at some of what you're talking about.
Yeah, so just to put a little bit more point on that. So, I understand, obviously, that there are some comparable things that are going on, and obviously, I understand that in each of the schools, year to year, first to second, second to third, you're looking at student progress and, and how things have gone. But, you know, at the end, you know, everybody's in eighth grade, and the question is, once we sum up everything that's happened, how can we compare it? And, and so, obviously, the thrust of this question is, you know, obviously, every parent would like to know where their child will be in twenty years, and I would hope every elementary educator would want to know how their students were doing in middle school or high school, you know, as a function of whatever had happened during those elementary school years. So, I hope that the school district can find some ways to make sure that, you know, you get that sort of final report card that says, "Yeah, this really worked out for this group of students," or, you know, maybe in some sense, you know, there's some students that this program didn't work out for, for whatever reason. And then, the second question is, and you sort of already touched on this a little bit, is, you know, how do you think we should evaluate elementary schools for comparability of educational experience? And so, you touched on a number of things, but, and there's some work in progress, I guess, but if you could just restate that, maybe, and we'll put it in two buckets. So, there's a bucket, there's some things we can measure, but there's some things that we care about that, you know, we'll never be able to measure. And the, the working example, of course, is this group of parents that, that failed ethics with respect to getting their kids into college, and we would hope, of course, that all of the students that, you know, are being educated in AB would not fail ethics at some point in the future, but I don't believe we've really structured a good way to assess the ethical behavior of our students. So, in those two buckets, you know, what would you like to see us do to assess comparability? So, in those two buckets, you know, what would you like to see us do to assess comparability amongst the elementary education?
So, I might defer to Deb on this question, because I feel like it is sort of a district-level question, in how we are looking at comparability between the elementary schools.
Sure. So, one of the things, very beginning of the year, our superintendent talked about, our students being loved, challenged, supported. Did I miss one? And love, valued, challenged, and supported. I got all four of them. How do we know that at the time of graduation? And so, again, that backwards look, I think that you were alluding to before. There are resources out there for us to use, and that is something I think we're going to take under account and look at in the coming years. But one of the other things that we can be doing now is to, what Juliana alluded to before, and that is, look at some of the social-emotional learning benchmarks, the same way that we can be looking to see how children are making good decisions, what kinds of decisions that they're making, and helping them grow in that way. And we can create some kinds of tools that can help us and allow us to know their growth from year to year. So, I would, you know, when you ask, what ways would we like to assess our students, most definitely in their learning, but all those other areas that we know make for good learners and for good lifetime people when they graduate.
Thank you. And of course, so my objective in answering the question is to hope that at some future meeting, you will demonstrate to us how you were able to do that.
And I would just ask if members who want to speak beyond the primary question would just address me first, so that I can give permission and keep the meeting on track. Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was really wonderful.
Have a nice.
Okay. Here comes Dave.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I want to highlight one of the other Wellness Week activities, our free smoothies that are made and handed out outside of the teacher's lounge. And I stumbled across a student who I knew, and I said, hey, what flavor is that? And they go, I don't know. Like, what does it taste like? The smoothies were mostly berries and organic yogurt. So, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is David James. I'm the K-12 Health and Phys Ed Coordinator, and I also teach four classes a day at the high school. The plan tonight is to share recent highlights within the last three years of K-6, 7-8, and 9 through 12. I want to start by sharing one of my personal mottos, or a tidbit that I put in the mind of most of the Phys Ed teachers. You can learn more about a person in an hour of play than a year of conversation. Put that into personal reflection for a second. Friend, family member, colleague, that you've never played tennis with, you play with them. They go up by quite a few points. Do they ever concede a point? Do they ever give you a close call on the line? Do they ever give you a do-over? Do they become the person who tries to teach you how to play tennis, when like, hey, come on, we're just trying to play for fun here? I feel strongly about this, and I share that with my staff repeatedly. In kindergarten through sixth grade, we've put an emphasis on mindfulness. What does that look like? It could be as simple as a mindful minute. Hey, just relax and focus on the right now. Don't worry about yesterday. Don't worry about later today. Just breathe and relax for a minute. We've also done things like reflective breathing. Focus on what body part you feel. Do you feel your air going in your nose? Do you feel your chest rise? Do you feel your diaphragm moving out? Another one was mindful walking. Literally, walking while counting your steps. Or more challenging, counting by twos, counting in a different language. Walking while counting your breaths. And one that was very fun to do at a department meeting slash professional development, walking while there are coins balanced on your shoes. What else about mindful? Mindful, this is also sometimes just a coloring book break. All the elementary schools do some sort of yoga in class. Sometimes it's teacher-led, sometimes it's a yoga flip book with poses. But I absolutely want to highlight a gray block elective where junior high classes walked over to McCarthy Town and taught four different yoga sessions. I'll highlight that in a minute. All the elementary schools also do a consistent jump rope assessment, where the teacher uses iPads to film students. It's pre and post to work on their form and their number of jumps. Both teachers and peers access the iPads. I'm going to use tree pose now and later on here. So this is one of the classes that the junior high came over and taught yoga. This was a student-prepared, student-practiced, and student-reflected activity. The junior high gray block went over four different times and taught four different grade levels, and they customized it for each one. I give a lot of credit to Ms. Rimpis. She had a backup plan for students who didn't want to be the presenters. They just meandered in and did yoga with students. She had a backup plan for the students who couldn't handle being a presenter or a yoga. They were the filmers. In seventh and eighth grade, we recently did some health curriculum updates. We're trying to stay ahead of the state that claims it's going to roll out some new frameworks. I want to assure you that the health curriculum updates, we just improved on some of the topics around e-cigarettes, vaping, opioids, the difference between medicinal marijuana and just street marijuana, or still the illicit version. We increased lessons about respect among identity and gender and all the LGBT topics. At the junior high, we're focusing on using three teaching spaces. When they're outdoors, that's easy. There's plenty of outdoor space. But indoors, with some collaboration, with some practice, with a three musketeers of junior high staff, I call it, they're sharing the spaces better, and willing to do either three different activities or three of the same activities, but managed by one teacher. I want to highlight more about the gray block. And these are just the junior high health and phys ed offerings for gray block. Ms. Rimpis did mindfulness, relaxation, and yoga. That's where she taught that to students, and then as a student project, brought them over to McCarthy Town. Another teacher did kickboxing. There was a cardiovascular component, but there was also a skill and a technique component. Another teacher did adventures in fitness, small group challenges, large group challenges with a fitness component. Another teacher did really fine handmade art. I have some pictures in a moment, but it used a variety of materials, variety of tools. It was really creative. Next, there was a cooking club in the afternoon. And the cooking club was often a mini version of Iron Chef. I visited when they did salsa day, and there were four different versions of salsa that they all had to make from scratch, and then they went around and judged each other's salsa. Another highlight of the cooking club is they did an Italian dinner, where they had roe, aprons, and chef hats, and vegetarian meat. They had all of the offerings, and the students literally stood there and explained, oh, do you want to know what ingredients are in that? So it was a really interactive meal. So here are two examples of the handmade art. The one on the left is plexiglass with layers of clear paint with pictures. The one on the right is wood burning. And the students make them to bring home, but they also donate them to local homeless shelters and veterans programs. At the high school, at 9 through 12, we incorporated a new grading process. Assessments are now 10% of the grade. Up until two years ago, the grading process was almost exclusively attendance-based, and that was an important change. We also adjusted the makeup policy. In the past, excused absences had to be made up, and that's no longer, that's no longer the case. So what do assessments look like? One is just a reflection. Let's use tennis as an example. During a tennis unit, students might have to write a reflection on, hey, what skills did you learn? When might you use those outside of school? Or reflection on the fitness center. What muscle groups did you learn about? What gym or activity or place outside of school might you work out? We did a variety of pre and post skill, and sometimes flexibility. The flexibility one was obvious, sit and reach, pre and post measuring hamstring flexibility. Pre and post skill for table tennis was bouncing on forehand side, the edge, backhand side for a count at the beginning of the unit, and then at the end of the unit. We also did some paper and pencil traditional quizzes about drugs and alcohol and health, the safety and skill of archery. We also did some through the Google platform with a little practice. The Google platform was a great resource to look at trends. Finally, I gave teachers in the Phys Ed Department a lot of flexibility in how they wanted to use the assessments. And one teacher did what was called a group quiz, which put a lot less pressure on one student at a time. And the example I'll share is, in the fitness center, I observed a group doing bench press. And they had to collaborate and talk about who's going to demonstrate, who's going to be the spotter, who's going to talk about what muscle groups we used. And so it allowed students to share the responsibility, but also allowed collaboration. Over the last couple of years, the high school has, I've really pushed for some new lifetime offerings. I want to preface this, we're only a five-person department, so unfortunately, we haven't gotten these offerings to every single student. One of them's table tennis. What a huge hit, having six table tennis, having six tables going at the same time, four people at a time, that's 24 people playing, no one standing around watching. I often started table tennis with, where was the first time you played? Your grandparents' basement, your aunt or uncle's garage? Because it's a social game. It's a friendly, social game. We taught a variety of non-scoring games, like Tyrant of the Table, or Categories, or Magic Number, where there was no worry about winning or losing. It just got to practice skills in a less stressful environment. Although Categories was hilarious, hilariously funny, the challenger picked a Categories, colors. And you just hit back and forth, saying a new color, until you ran out of colors. Didn't matter if you hit it out of the table or hit into the net, you were only out if you ran out of Categories, to say. High school students were incredibly creative in some of the categories we came up, they came up with. Countries in Europe, to name a few. We did singles matches, we did doubles matches. A student helped create a spreadsheet that I currently use for all tournaments, because it's very user-friendly. We also did an art overlap. But I took this picture because, until I started playing table tennis here at school, I just thought a table tennis paddle was a table tennis paddle. A student brought their own. I got a chance to try it, look at it, and like, killer spin. Once you've tried a high-end table tennis paddle, you won't go back. And the same student also brought in the table tennis ball on the left. That's a three-star butterfly table tennis ball. I had to order them off eBay, because they didn't sell them in the regular Phys Ed catalogs. I got a little creative with table tennis. So this is one of my, this is one of the assessments in table tennis. The challenge was, here's a paddle, trace it on a piece of paper, but then make a piece of artwork that's not the table tennis paddle. So on the left, someone made a gumball machine. Second from the left is a hot air balloon. And then we have a fish, and then we have a turtle. I had to actually tell students, like, no, you have to be done today. I don't want this assignment to, like, it's an in-class assignment. Both these students who showed success at table tennis and challenges with table tennis had a lot of fun with this assignment. Another lifetime activity that every ninth grader gets an opportunity to do, so some of the other ones might have been choice activities, that not every student would get an opportunity to do, but every ninth grader gets a chance to do archery. It's a lifetime activity, something you could do at summer camp, in your backyard, at a local sportsman's club. It uses fine motor skills and coordination. The traditional Phys Ed programs, jumping jacks, push-ups, sit-ups, jogging, don't appeal to every student anymore. And archery was a way of drawing them, drawing them back in. It also requires mental focus, and being able to reflect, okay, my arrow was high and to the left, what do I do? Or, my arrow is not staying knocked on the bow, what do I do? And some students started an archery club. And they actually had an archery competition this last fall, where 24 people competed, and even to adults. The picture on the left is some of our school equipment. You can see the safety line, the arrow bucket, and that's six of our bows, we have 12. The picture on the light, on the right, a student sent in, that's one, I'm assuming they're a local sportsman's club, but that's their highlight of their accuracy. Biking. There's a big gray storage unit behind the high school that fits over 30 bikes, more than 30 helmets, and a small pile of tools that I'm still slowly learning how to use. It's another lifetime activity, that we stay on campus most of the time. We do two field trips. We have some positive police interaction. I'll follow up on that in a second. And we did a literature link. The two field trips, so, one of the field trips, we simply went to the Jenks Land. That's kind of behind Idlewild and to the right, was less than a mile from campus. We did it in one class period. Another field trip, we surprised them and just went to a cafe in West Acton, and we had snacks. We had hot chocolate and snacks. The positive police interaction was really important. Due to the rail trail in town, the police had to add four bicycles to their police force. They've had to increase their police presence at the crossings, not just for automobiles, but for bike riders who need to follow those rules. The police shared that they've given out tickets to bike riders who have rolled through stop signs, who have driven through a red light, they've given them tickets. And they shared very specifically, a bike is a vehicle. When you're on your bike and you're standing in a crosswalk, you're a vehicle. Cars don't have to stop when you are on your bike. You have to get off your bike to be, to recognize as a pedestrian in a crosswalk. And it was, it was an opportunity for police, for students to meet police in a positive setting. One of the offers came with us on both field trips. It was actually really nice. And the literal, literature link is basically a book box. I bought cycling magazines, books on bike maintenance, books on bike history, and a whole bunch of local maps, so that on rainy days, or days when we did like a tire repair day, or a minor repair day, students could just take something out of the book box and take a look at it. Swimming and lifeguard training. I'm really thankful of one of my colleagues who'd been pushing about this for years, and finally, we got permission, organization to. Swing is one of the ninth-grade requirements, but we always, she was always asking, like, how come we can't teach lifeguarding? I'm like, let's work on it. So we got one staff member trained to be a lifeguard trainer. It's a lifetime activity, and 20 students took it last quarter. Only 16 passed the lifeguarding exam, and I'm happy to share that 14 of those 16 got jobs. We had, we had pool, we had lifeguard organizers reaching out to us, saying, would you share with us your recently-certified lifeguards? I saved this for second for last, because it's awesome. The person on the left is an experienced fisherman. Within the first cast, he caught that beautiful bass. I shouldn't say, within his, within his first several casts, he caught that bass. And then he was done fishing for the day. He helped other people. Fishing is a lifetime activity. Students got to enjoy nature and learn from each other. And I'm thankful for my colleague, Eileen Flannery, who got us access to the Musketic Sportsman's Club in West Concord. Quick bus ride, they stocked the ponds. The person on the right had never picked up a fishing pole before, let alone put a worm on a hook. And the picture doesn't do it justice. That's a beautiful rainbow trout. Finally, I want to close with, this is a group of high school students doing the tree pose, just like we saw some junior high and middle school students tree pose, doing tree pose with elementary. Those are some highlights of the last couple of years. I'm available for quick questions?
Michael.
Interesting. I have a couple of questions. One is related to the yoga class and archery class. Actually, there, I heard of the same thing for the two classes, which is yoga. You mentioned that you offer that in the junior high? And then with our archery class, you offer a ninth grader, right? So, but why not, you know, the, you know, two other, I would say, two other, like, yoga to high school, also the archery to, you know, maybe junior high, or even 10th grader, or 11th grader?
That's definitely on our radar to offer. It's well within logistics to offer, we just haven't expanded it yet. Archery is still pretty new. We only, we brought in members of the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife to train us. I would need to bring those people in again to do some retraining, and the junior high staff. But that's, that's in our, it's on our longer-term view, is to add some of these to other levels. Good question.
Okay. So then my next question is that, you know, if you can go back to the grading process, that slide. that slide. Okay, so now, assessment now only, you know, takes 10%. What are the other 90%?
Good question. Each class is worth four and a half points for participation, effort, being prepared for whatever the weather is that day. And the other half a point, or 20 classes times a half a point are the assessment. So each class has a variety of points, that four and a half points, so it's worth effort, attitude, participation. So for example, a student that refuses to participate, or participates at a very low level, the teacher would hopefully say to them at the end of class, I didn't give you the full points today.
Angie, and then Adam, then Mary.
I want to go back to the beginning that there's some health curriculum updates. Could you give us an update on what is the state legislation in terms of the health framework? Is that passed? What is the status of that? And you mentioned that at the beginning, that only junior high has updated? Is it high schools? Can you kind of give a little bit more detail, what has been updated, and how can parents find out what's changed?
The state, the new state frameworks haven't rolled out yet. We did some R and D last year to get ready for them. We know they're going to include vaping, we know they're going to include opioids, we know they're going to include more respect of gender and identity, we know they are. All of those things, we currently do. We currently do all of those topics at the junior and high school, we just added more lessons at the junior high. I need to do a better job adjusting, in improving the website and communication on the website then, because those things currently we do at the junior high and high school.
So the parents find out what's changed by, via the website? Or how is that, how do they know if there's anything added or changes, or, yeah?
At the beginning of each new school year, the health teachers share a plan for the year, and that would, the, the new activities, the new lessons, the new topics would be on that.
David, first of all, thank you very much for the wonderful presentation. I'm, I'm curious what amazing ideas you have as the high school moves to the larger time period and the larger blocks, and how that's going to affect how far you can ride away from campus.
So what's going to, what's going to affect how far I can ride from campus is whether I get the permission slip for just one period, or for like half a day. The, the question about the longer class period is a really valid one. Our plan is to, is to divide the class in, basically, two blocks. Let's use tennis as an example. A teacher would take half the block to work on skills, short break, second half, now we're doing games or a tournament setting. So it's really just to chunk, or, or segment the time a little bit better. Like, right now, with a 47-minute block, with changing at the beginning and end, it's usually change, get out, warm up, do the activity, and you're back in. With a longer block, it allows us to chunk it. Or do a main activity, short break, and a yoga and relaxing activity. But the long, the, the best answer is it's going to allow us to chunk the time a little bit better, without worrying about hurry up and getting students back to change.
So I just want to say, I really appreciate you doing the lifetime activities. I think that really builds, you know, beyond, oh my gosh, you have to take gym and whatever, that it really builds a love of movement, which we need in this country. But I will say, 17 years into my yoga practice, and it's still surprisingly windy when I do tree pose.
So, I like a number of things of what I, I was able to watch from the audience, I didn't want to interrupt. But I, I love the diversity of, of activities, because I think that offers a point of access for a broad variety of our students, so, so I really like that. I like that you're asking for the students to do reflections, because I, I think that helps them do an exercise of taking inventory of their skills, and judging for themselves which skills they want to improve on, and which skills they, they feel comfortable with. So I like that. I also like the, the staff asking, what if, and why can't we do, like, so I was very heartened to hear that the, that started, the, the license for the-
Lifeguard.
Lifeguard, sorry, yeah. Well, it's started as a question, why not? And, and I would urge you to continue to do that.
Thank you. The lifeguarding was a work in progress for a couple of years, but the teacher was incredibly excited, and the students were incredibly excited. And I spent a lot of time making sure I observed that class in action.
At the elementary level, how many hours per week are the students in physical education? And recognizing that the school day will not be longer, should more hours be dedicated to physical education?
It's not even an hour right now, it's 45 minutes once a week at the elementary level, so I would support any increase whatsoever. I would support, and absolutely, I would support any increase. That's a no-brainer to me.
I just wanted to follow up with a comment on that, John. You know, I think you're hitting on something that I think, in all honesty, David, is way too polite to actually put on the table, but we have three core values in our district, one of which is wellness. And you just heard from him that, you know, we're offering physical education 45 minutes a week, but we also have a health education program that ends in grade nine, and that always makes me wonder, what possibly could juniors and seniors in high school ever need to know about health? And as they head off to college, you know, we're really missing some gaps, and it's through no fault of David and his staff, they do a tremendous job addressing the needs based on the staff that they have. But I think as we look forward and we think about programming, this is going to be an area that we really need to think about. You know, the amount of time kids are engaged in physical education, he's doing some wonderful creative work with his staff around that, but there's a limit to what they can offer. You know, and I think this goes to Michael's comment too, which is, why not expand some of these things? Part of the answer that David didn't say is, we don't have the staff to expand a lot of those things. I know David would love to expand physical education offerings and offer more opportunities to upper-grade students as well at the high school, but there's just not enough staff to be able to break kids out into the number of groups that you would need. You know, as a comparable, you know, Lincoln Sudbury High School is a great comparable high school, it actually has a slightly smaller student population than us. I don't know the exact number, but David, do you have a sense of how many?
They have 11.
They have 11 physical education teachers, and how many do we have?
Five.
Five. So I just want to make sure I'm highlighting that, and I, I think also, and just in terms of health education, we've talked a lot about the needs of vaping and e-cigarettes, the new opioid legislation that's come forward. How do we continue to address those students' needs? Because the, the biggest fear I always have, if our students are ending their health education careers in grade nine, what are they going off to colleges with around their beliefs and strategies that they have around maintaining a healthy lifestyle? I think we're missing a big opportunity there, so, again, there's no immediate solution, because finances are fixed and there's many priorities that we balance, but I just want to make sure that I recognize that, because we just don't have enough resources dedicated to this, so.
Thank you. We've had internal discussions on the Phys Ed department of how to offer things, but a, a big part of the limitation is staff. We are very much interested in offering upper-level, health-specific, sexuality education, a lifetime personal health offerings, but we need, we need more staff.
I just wanted to remark on the opportunity I think you have with the gray block at the junior high, because we've had lots of ups and downs with it this year, but one of the most remarkable things, one of the ones you didn't touch on is this cut-out perfect that Mrs. Rodman, I think, runs, which is in the mindfulness realm, but it's not the yoga class that Ms. Rumpus says. But I just wanted to note that I think that it's a really ama, like, they get to choose what they want to take, and, you know, obviously, sometimes they get first choice, sometimes they don't, but there's a real opportunity there, I think, for giving kids a targeted experience, if the adults around them think that they need that. I think that some of those offerings, obviously, they're not going to be for everybody, but there's a real opportunity there to give kids something that they can't get anywhere else in their junior high experience. The class I'm speaking about is about self-image, and there's conversation about it literally every other day, which is remarkable, because all I've heard is complaints about other things all year long, and, I mean, she's just amazed, I don't know what she was telling me about some, there's a TV show that they've been watching about, like-
Shrill?
No. Now I'm not going to remember what it's called, but I think it was on, it, it's about, they, they go to high schools, and it's about kids reflecting with each other about popularity and struggles, and how they're all the same, If You Knew Me, or something like that, is what the, anyway, they were talking about it, and I guess it's a program that comes into, there's a challenge day, or something like that, it's a program that, she was saying that this teacher has wanted to bring to the district for years and years and years, because it's something that, that, it gets students to interact with each other and talk about these real-life things. But just in terms of the wellness, it's such a, a nice thing outside of gym class, outside of health class, that's an offering for kids to really explore parts of themselves that need to be explored in junior high, and they don't have an opportunity usually to do that. So congratulations, it's really, really nice program.
So if anyone else has any, can you continue to take feedback from people? I'm really interested in moving on, noting the time. So if anyone else wants to give feedback, please feel free to, to email Peter. And thank you.
Thank you.
It's fantastic. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm like busy scratching notes. Okay. So we welcome George Arsenault.
Thank you. I was happy, I didn't know Peter was going to steal all of my thunder. I probably would have brought some instruments or something to, to make up for it, had I known, but I, I do have a couple more things to say about that as well as we go forward. So I'm George Arsenault, I'm the new director of Performing Arts, K-12, in the Acton-Boxborough Schools, I'm really happy to be here, and really pleased to be able to present to you tonight in my first year in the district. So I'll speak about some things, certainly, that I've seen this year, some plans that we have for the future next year, and touch upon some things maybe from past years as well. As I was thinking about this presentation, what we speak about, I, I saw a quote that really struck me, and I thought it was an interesting one, though I thought I'd start with it tonight, so. It goes, "Whether music was an evolutionary precursor to language, or merely a byproduct of cognitive faculties that developed to support language, music is pervasive across human cultures and throughout history." It's a really important thing that I think about, that the performing arts, music, and theater are everywhere, and they always have been everywhere. We're really fortunate here, one of the things that attracted me to this district as I was looking at positions, was that the Acton-Boxborough schools have authentic and meaningful opportunities for all students, not just students that choose to be very serious in high school, but for students across the entire district, K-12, and in the coming years, pre-K-12. So very excited to see that. What you see here up here first is our new standards that are coming, and we've been promised them for many years as well. We're pretty close on ours, I don't know if we're going to beat PE, I, I apologize if we do, Dave, but they're coming very, very soon. And they, they were adopted as a national model in 2014, so you, you see a quick little diagram of their, of creating, and performing, and responding, and connecting, and together those make up the artistic process. And if we were to take that and expand it upon, you know, many of the professional endeavors that we will do, or our students will do throughout their lives, it's very authentic, it's very meaningful, and it's very, very relative in just about any field that a child will go through in their careers. So I'll move into some of our new things, and some of the nitty-gritty that's been happening in our department. So we just launched a performing arts website, this is the first time we've had a unified district-wide website for performing arts, and our URL is up there, a little screenshot of what is up there right now. This is largely, as we'd imagine, a gateway to our faculty sites, many of our teachers have classroom sites that are pretty substantial, and to have parents be able to get to those sites easily, whether they're from the school or from our centralized site. It also, of course, has links to any district curriculum documentation that we have. We've started a performing arts Twitter, so we're reaching out to the community, and some of the exciting things that are happening. I think I could probably do 30 tweets a day, I'm trying to get one a week at this point. But it's a nice way to kind of highlight a couple of the things that are going on, and, and reach different people in, in different places. We also have a district-wide performing arts calendar. This was a big push from me, I think it's really important to have one centralized space. If you look in the months of April and May, and January, there's certain months where we could easily have 15 or 16 public performances with large groups across the district. So I thought it was not just a nice way for us to see all of the things that are, that are coming, but also for parents who are trying to schedule across different schools, and also for my faculty to know, wow, there's a lot going on that second week of May, maybe I should pick a different time for that concert. So that's up there, parents can look at it, they can subscribe to that as an RSS feed as well, so anytime, any of the district opportunities, whether they are in music or in theater, from K through 12, we're hoping to have all of those up there. I believe we have most of them up there for this year, and we just sat down to put all of next year's dates in already, so that's a way for us to stay organized, and be mindful of our parent community as we schedule all of those events. They're great events, and they're worth it. And finally, what we had up there for this year was an elementary music frequently asked questions. In the, the beginning of this year, we introduced our Ensemble Enrichment Block, which is a new program. There were a lot of questions, it was my very first couple of weeks at AB, and I spent a good deal of my time kind of handling those questions, so we compiled all of the big questions that we had during that time, put them into this FAQ, and that lives in the performing arts website now, so we'll be able to have that static place for parents to go to, and of course, they can still get in touch with me if they have questions about what's going on. New to next year, I found, when I got to the district, that signing up for instrumental music lessons was, was difficult. I found it difficult as a parent, and I'm a native English speaker. I have all the advantages I need to do that, and I still found that it was a complicated process, so I felt like there was a big need for us to streamline that. So next year, we'll use our performing arts websites and collaborate with Community Ed to make the signup process for instrumental music lessons at the elementary school significantly easier. It's really going to be a point-and-click on what instrument my child wants to play, and then we'll collect information at that point. Also, we're going to simplify the registration process for asking for financial aid, and we've targeted ways to do that, to assist those families, but that process also was fairly cumbersome, and it put a lot of the pressure on those families to, to find out how to do it, and who to mail the form to, and, and things like that. So now, we streamline that, they'll be able to start that process on this website, it'll come directly to me, and I can also assist them in acquiring an instrument, which was not part of what we did before as well, the assumption being, if they need financial aid, to be in the program, that they would probably also need help acquiring an instrument. And that's something we can do through our music vendors, and we have a limited instrument inventory in the district as well. Peter mentioned it before, but I have a nice fancy slide. So Presidium Circus, this was a wonderful, wonderful accomplishment, Jessica Harms and Brendan Hearn and their staff, their creative staff at the high school. This is a wonderful festival, and, and a very, very prestigious one. There were 112 schools in one act plays that started the process. 112 schools over three weekends, they went through preliminary, semis, and finals, and from 112, they narrowed it down to three winners. Like Peter said, this is the third time in AB's history, and the first time in 22 years. Here's a picture of our amazing cast of The Book of Everything, if you didn't see it, it was just a charming and very thought-provoking play. It asked a lot of really wonderful questions, it asked them in a really tasteful way, and it allowed our students to engage with material that certainly wasn't easy, but in a safe way, and, and a really, really expressive way as well, so I was certainly pleased and, and proud of that production. Peter also mentioned this, but yes, again, I brought the slide. This is the NAMM Foundation, and this is a really wonderful thing for us, and the recognition itself, of course, is just a recognition, but what it is, is it's, you know, it's proof of what we're doing. It's nice to see that the energy that we're putting into, and the resources that we're investing into the performing arts are recognized, and, and they are real in relation to the communities that surround us as well. So this is the National Association of Music Merchants, and all of the data is verified by the Music Institute Research at the University of Kansas, so a really nice recognition for us. I'm certainly very pleased and proud for all the staff that worked very hard on that. I just got to the district this year, so clearly, this wasn't my doing, this was all of the years that Acton has put into and invested in Boxborough into their music programs and performing arts programs. No school district could start this in a year and earn this achievement, so I'm really, really proud of everyone and all the work that they've done, and appreciate the continued support. So I'll break down a little bit at each level, what's been happening over the past year, and then look- and then looking to what's going to be new for next year. So we welcomed a new music teacher, a lot of new staff in our department, a new music teacher at both Merriam and McCarthy Town, so the sister schools, the twin schools got twin new music teachers and they're having a wonderful time in their spaces. This was the first year of Ensemble Enrichment Block. There were certainly questions when we first started it, as a new program, there were bumps in the road, there was confusion at some schools, some of the schools were very, very comfortable because they had been doing something like it for a very long time. In the end, looking back at the entire year and when I looked at the program in the very beginning as I came into it, I really did find it a unique community-making, music-making experience. And that is special, to have different grades, different classes participating at the same time and that kind of artistic relationship that students can build with each other, it's very precious and it doesn't happen if it's the same kids every single time in the same classroom. It's not however easy and it's not also something that initially every student is going to love. It's not ice cream eating Ensemble Enrichment Block, it's music-making, it's art-making and sometimes art can be difficult at first and that's okay. So we've certainly learned that whatever a child's reaction to music is, that's the right reaction at that time. It doesn't mean it will always be their reaction to music at that time, but for whatever reason, different children are experiencing it in different ways. All of our teachers in the different ensembles have seen improvement from many, many, many students that maybe at first were very resistant to it and they've found different ways to incorporate them as well because there's more than just one way to say, you're singing in a choir, doesn't necessarily mean you're standing on the riser and you're singing in the choir, you're participating in the choir. And we're finding ways and trying to support every student as they go through there. And of course the band and the string ensembles are growing as well. Speaking of the string program, which we've invested a lot in over the past years and I think it's wonderful, we've had really great growth and we're continuing to grow at all levels in the string program. It's really starting now to show in the high school program where we're up 30% year to year in our enrollment in the orchestra program. And ukulele, ukulele is in five out of six of the schools now. That kind of is like a lifelong skill, like David was talking about, one of those instruments that anybody can play the ukulele. It's wonderful, it's a beautiful little instrument, it's light, it's relatively inexpensive and it's kind of pleasant to listen to, which is nice, it's a little easier to have 20 ukuleles in a room than say 20 drum sets. And the students are really loving it. I was in a sixth grade classroom this morning where the teacher was introducing ukulele and they're working through different chords, the foundations of music and every single student, 24 students in the room, all 24 of them could not wait to get their hands on their instrument and they were working instantly. So a really exciting thing to see there, I hope to expand that as well. So planning for the future, next year, PE and art and performing arts and music are planning to do some collaboration with our pre-K levels and helping them to incorporate the skills that we have in our departments into their existing classrooms in a collaborative model, rather than having, you know, a more traditional drop-off model that we might have in fifth grade, we felt like in pre-K it would be great to kind of help the teachers that are there doing it, they know their students and we can incorporate those skills so when our teachers do get to have them in their, their regular classrooms, they'll be that much better off and ready to do what they're looking to do in those levels. And also at the elementary school this year, Ensemble Enrichment Band at Blanchard. This is a bit of a change and certainly one that will require more explanation than I probably should give tonight, but to mirror the Acton program where we have $195 fee at the Acton program, next year at the Blanchard School, which traditionally has a separate extracurricular band program, which is tremendous, maybe a little bit more intense in terms of the resources you need to participate, we are going to model and mirror the Acton program at Blanchard next year. So there'll be an option for students in fifth and sixth grade to pay the $195 fee and to be part of the in-school band at Blanchard. This doesn't however, take the place of the Blanchard band program, that will continue unchanged, it happens outside of the school day, Mr. Barrett is a superstar, we love him and the program that he has there, so that will be continued to be supported as well. There's financial assistance available for both the $195 regular in-school band and there's also financial assistance available for families if they're looking to do the traditional Blanchard band program, fourth, fifth and sixth grade, beginning band, advanced band and all of their ensembles as well. So if families and they certainly, if they have questions about that, as we start to roll that out to the Blanchard community, they can contact me and I can give them more information about that. Just a couple more. Our junior high school, we welcomed a new theater arts teacher, she was an existing teacher on staff, so the students were happy to see one of their teachers and they became their theater arts teacher. We also welcomed a new band director, that was me, I was not on staff already. That is not however, me in the Colonials costume, though my staff did tell me that, they were, they tried to go through, they lasted a good 45 minutes where they were trying to convince me that at graduation I had to conduct in the Colonia so that they should start fitting me for the costume sooner or later. I wasn't going to give in. String enrollment is continuing to grow at the junior high school, we had 14 students accepted into the Junior Eastern District Festival and our music and theater department collaborated on a really wonderful production of Annie, including a heart-stopping moment where there was the golden retriever on stage, it was just absolutely beautiful. New next year is new music curriculum in the general music classroom, that's going to be utilizing music technology and this was in collab, in conjunction with the Chromebook Initiative that's going into the junior high school next year, we wanted to find ways for students to be creating authentically in the junior high school level, which is traditionally a tough time to find things that really engages junior high school students. Part of being a junior high school student, of course, is kind of finding out I do like and I don't like and I'm going to tell you right now. Music technology and these composition projects tend to be universally popular, most kids really find it because they can, they can really customize all the projects to what they like, the type of music they like, the types of things that they'd like to study. So that's going in, we've actually done just a little bit of work piloting that this spring and our teacher, Mr. Cherig, is looking forward to putting that in his curriculum next way, next year. And our search committee, as Peter mentioned, and we support it here, I thank you for your support with this position as we combine some things together. We have a search committee underway for a 1.0 FTE instrumental music teacher. We have a tremendous reputation in the state for music education, we had 50 high-quality candidates for one job. We took a long time trying to go through there, we narrowed it down to 12 and we're still working to find the right person, but we have a tremendous crew of candidates that we're working with, so we're really fortunate for that. I thank you for your support and I look forward to an announcement on that soon. And at the high school, things are wonderful, it's been a wonderful year for us. In addition to their METG win, Presidium Circus hosted the Fifth Annual Massachusetts Festival. And if you were there, that's a hard thing to say, if you were there on that Saturday, you would have walked in the school and just seen hundreds of students from around the states engaging in workshops and performances, all dealing with theater in the state, it was really wonderful. Our marching band, as you can see up above, is wonderful as ever, they earned a gold medal at the 2018 MICA State Finals after a very tough year with no lights for most of the beginning of the season. So we talked about this year as being one where there was a lot of change and there wasn't a lot of light and we worked really hard and they were proud of that, so nice to see that resiliency there with them. We had 18 students accepted to the Senior District Festival, three students accepted to our All-State Festival. Our enrollment in orchestra as we look to next year is up 30%, which is wonderful and I can, I expect those numbers to increase as that program really starts to take hold, it's wonderful and our teachers are doing a great job. And then we've also had an expansion of our improv curriculum in the theater class. New to AB next year, we will continue that scope and sequence from the junior high school and the electronic music curriculum and add that to the high school as we add a brand-new course, we haven't taught it before, in electronic music curriculum. It's something that I bring with me in my background in teaching music production using industry-standard digital audio workstations and Logic Pro, very, very exciting, another place where students that might not have traditionally been part of our department were able to reach those students. So this is a really broad view of students, many of which we would have never met before. So it's an exciting place, I loved doing it in my previous position, I really look forward to seeing it at AB, I think there's a, there's a great place for it. And we redesigned our choruses, which Mrs. Moss's choruses have always been tremendous and she wanted to do the same thing where she reached a broader section of students, so we redesigned our chorus to be just that, really a community sing chorus, this is something where most freshmen will go into it, it's not an auditions group and our enrollment for that is tremendous, it's almost three times what it was this year, so I think that was a really successful move for her to make going into that group. They just left for Texas today, so our chorus is on a tour of Texas as of today. So that's a broad look at what we've done over the past year, hopefully a little bit in the years before that, you'll have to tell me, I wasn't here, but we're looking forward to bringing music to every student in the district and not having it be isolated and not having in any way, having any obstacles to participate in that and our chorus standards that are coming in, I think will help us to bring it to every student at AB. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, I'm gonna allot just five minutes for questions.
I'm just gonna make a quick plug, so May 7th is the Spring Concert, it's the chorus and the band together, which I love because I probably wouldn't have gone to the band performances, I have chorus students. And May 10th and 11th is Spring Jam, which is the clubs, the acapella groups, absolutely fabulous.
So my son happened to spend a number of years in the band and my daughter happened to spend a number of years in Presidium Circus. And one of the things that I found shocking about those two organizations is it turns out, and I think these slides spoke to the point, that there was a certain level of competitive spirit in both the band, you know, and in Presidium Circus beyond what I would normally have expected. So clearly competition is neither good nor bad, there is healthy competition and unhealthy competition. As you have observed these programs, where do you feel we are on the spectrum of competitive ness?
With regards to our comparable schools, we're highly competitive in terms of are we able to keep up with the surrounding communities? With regards to what we want to be, do, do we need competition in the arts maybe is the question, is that, is that a fair?
The question is, in terms of the experience of the program, you know, is the students' experience of the various competitions that go on, a healthy competitive experience or not and why do you feel that way?
I think depending on the student, some students really need it and love it and maybe they're not a student that's ever had a sport and they found something like this and they feel like this gets those competitive juices flowing. Some students don't have those and don't need them or they want them, so I don't know that it's one answer for every single kid. I do think as we grow and as we look to the future, there was a time where the arts felt like we need to show some relevance, maybe we need to show that, no, we can, if we could take a bubble test or we could, we can have a medal or something to show the relevance and they're luckily cognitive science, emotional wellness and science has caught up and we realize, well, all of those benefits that we've always assumed are in the arts, well, they are there, now we can show brain science to show why it's happening, we can give these really great things. So I do think my field and my peers and when I go to conferences and we talk about all of these things, we talk about that a lot, is do we need to have these kind of medal-based systems as our only means to say that we're successful? My personal belief is no. Certainly it's been a tradition here for a long time, I don't plan on changing that anytime super soon and there is certainly merit to have and when you go to these festivals. As much as I would love to say to my students, actually my very first thing I said to my marching band this year when I met them was, I hope your very best performance is not at MICA finals, but I hope it's at the show for your parents two nights before. I want them to feel like artistic integrity means that I'm doing my very, very, very best even if no one is watching me, that's the true essence of integrity. So that's the kind of the, what I'd like to instill in those students and what I think we'd like to instill in our students here. The reality being the way we kind of structure institutionally, how we assess students, it is through kind of a rigorous assessment system, so in some ways we have to meet them in the middle. No, we don't need to go to maybe that formal assessment that some other, you know, subjects need, but you'll never see a student quite as motivated when they think three strangers are about to watch them and judge everything they're doing. So I like to temper that and make sure they understand that whether we get a gold or a bronze or a silver or a nothing, the learning was the process and that was the real benefit of the day, not so much what we got at the end of it.
This'll be really quick, you know, George, obviously a lot of fantastic things going on, so congratulations to you and your staff, you know, as you were showing those wonderful two slides that you so kindly pointed out were better than my update, you know, it really made me just think back to a lesson that my father taught me early in life, which was, never beat your boss in golf.
Uh-oh. Understood, this is my first and last apparently.
I just want to also share, I really enjoyed in the, in the fall, it was the 60th anniversary of the marching band.
It was.
And the alumni came in.
Yep.
And were marching alongside the current members of the march, it was really something to see and I really enjoyed that.
It's a strong community and it's a testament to how much they cared about what they did here. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Geez, it's almost a shame we have to get back to business here, that was really outstanding. Thank you to Juliana Schneider and George Arsenal and Dave James for those really outstanding presentations. Onto ongoing business, which is item nine on the agenda, I'm going to ask Mary to speak to the building committee.
Couple things on building committee, so on Wednesday night, we had our meeting and we had a gentleman from the Office of Campaign and Political Finance, I had hoped most of the committee could come, only five could make it, so I'm gonna write a summary of that because you should have seen the faces around the table, people didn't know the information and so we all need to know it because as I keep saying, educating people about the building project is all of our responsibility. So I'm gonna send you that, hopefully you'll read it and take it to heart. The design project, design is progressing, as Peter noted, we will be doing a community forum to share it with the community and get their feedback, so folks should look for that. And I'm gonna pass it to Peter for the debt strategy and the SOI.
Sure, so a couple things. As we proceed in, through this building project and we're anticipating, you know, positive approval from MSBA and we head into the town meetings and we prepare for town meetings and to be able to give both communities accurate information, I think one of the important things is that it's the school committee's responsibility to think about how they want to manage debt for the building and how that debt gets proposed moving forward. Dave has done a little bit of initial investigation and there were a couple building committee members who had forwarded some different strategies that various communities had used. You know, Somerville was one where they had a rolling debt schedule, where they took out a series of bonds rather than one bond, there's an option to just take out one bond, they all have different implications for how that will impact the tax base and the tax rate for the various households in the communities. So one thing we would like to do is actually propose to develop a new subcommittee now to start studying different strategies that the district may use to bond this project and what's going to work best for the Acton and Boxborough communities so that when we do get the final numbers and percent reimbursement from MSBA at the end of the summer, we have the strategy in place and all we have to do is actually plug the numbers into the strategy in order to know what the impact will look like and then be able to communicate that with the communities. So that was the first thought that we had, so I don't know, Diane, if you want to take it from there?
So this is a school committee-appointed subcommittee. Those of you who are interested in joining this committee, I would like an email from you stating why you think you're a good fit for this committee and I will make some selections and get back to you at the next meeting.
And are there gonna be others on it, like the FinCom member, a FinCom member from each town?
Yes, it's a multi-stakeholder committee. We are looking for, we're looking for two, did we say two? From representatives from school committee, so I'm sorry, I should have said that, thank you. John?
Yeah, so just to be clear, can you talk about how many members in total will be on the committee and where they're coming from?
So we talked.
No, do you want to?
So we talked about a member of FinCom from each community, we talked about the district's treasurer, Dave would sit on it and I think two school committee members, so I think we're looking for six. Two school committee members, two FinCom members, the treasurer for the district and Dave, Dave's not the treasurer, yeah.
Just to expand on, you know, what I see as the deliverable by way of strategy, I do see the deliverable really being in terms of projected tax rate and anybody who has listened to me make comments over the years would hardly find this surprising, you know, I do think that since the district now delivers essentially two-thirds of the tax bill to Acton and to Boxborough, you know, it makes sense for us to be explaining what we're doing in terms of our projected tax rate and all of these questions around debt and smoothing really are best, you know, considered in terms of how the, how the tax rate changes over time. So I hope that that's what will ultimately be the output of the committee.
Dave, do you have any thoughts? Did you want to add anything? Did you wanna add anything?
All right, thank you. If you could submit to me, what's it, by the, well, by the, by the end of the month. How's that? Because it's vacation next week. Yeah. Okay. Okay, in your packet is a statement of interest for the MSBA core program for Conant. We are looking for your vote tonight to approve that.
So, just a couple of quick comments on that. So, the statement of interest from Conant, this is largely copied from the previous statements of interest we've submitted for Conant. I can tell you with relative confidence that we have no hope that this is going to be accepted by MSBA. This is largely procedural to make sure that we just make sure that they know that if somehow they have extra money, we are more than willing to take it. The only real update in terms of what has been voted by the committee from previous years, and it's the reason that you saw this reposted today. I did ask JD to just go back in and add one statement saying that as a result of the feasibility study, we have removed Conant from consideration within the building project so that it's really clear that it's the Douglas and Gates Elementary Schools proceeding forward and that we're submitting this as an update because we've removed it from the building project. So, now it does need to stand on its own and begin to move forward in that pipeline. Realistically, I don't anticipate anything within the next five to seven years. I think, you know, through the entire construction process, until the building is commissioned and actually, the project is audited and closed out, which usually takes a couple of years after a building project ends, I don't think we're likely to be accepted into that pipeline. But again, we're gonna just continue to follow the procedure each year.
I just have one quick question about whether or not the potential project scope that's in this statement of interest refers to a renovation slash addition. Is that the standard language that we use? Because the MSBA says you have to look at a renovation or an addition before you would consider a new building. Great. Thanks.
So, I should've said this, sent an email early in the week, but I forgot. I read it last Friday night. And because of what you said, I don't think this needs to get fixed now. But this does not reflect all the work that's been done on the capital plan. It really calls to the Doran Whittier work again and again. And I think maybe next year's submission should bring in all that capital planning because I think it's an important piece of it.
Yeah, the MSBA requires.
I would like to move that having convened in an open meeting on April 11th, 2019, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Acton/Boxborough Regional School Committee, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April 11th, 2019 for the Luther-Conant Elementary School located at AD Taylor Road, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which the application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority two, to eliminate overcrowding. Priority five, to replace or modernize outdated facility systems. And priority seven, because the building space needs have made the current building obsolete. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the Acton/Boxborough Regional School District to filing an application for funding within the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Paul did. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, on to superintendent evaluation. You will find, one, two, three, three extremely important pages in your packet on the identifying the timeline for the superintendent evaluation. We're kind of in the home stretch here, a rubric that you should spend some time with and sources for data collection as you move toward the writing piece of the summative part of the evaluation. This is a major part of our job, to evaluate the superintendent. And we will do this at our June 13th business meeting. There's quite a bit of work required of each one of you, of each one of us between now and June 13th. So, I wanted to spend a few minutes going over this process. You will find a table, a timeline in here. So, tonight, I provided you with all of the documents that you will need to kind of become familiar with this process. Beth has kindly provided a link and it's the first link, the Part Four. It says Massachusetts Model System for Educator Evaluation, I'm sorry, Part Six. That link provides you a complete overview of the five steps of the superintendent evaluation process. The summative evaluation, which is step five, is on pages 14 and 15. So, I would pay particular attention to those. At our next school committee business meeting on May 9th, the superintendent will give his final report on the status of the current year's goals. And I will issue a general public request for input. At this point, the kind of gun goes off. Like, you will have all the information you need to begin to compose your individual evaluations. You will be provided with a template that identifies all the standards and the indicators that we're gonna use at that time. Your individual evaluations, which you will write, will be due to me on May 28th. You will submit them to me and I will compose a composite. I will combine everything and compose a composite summary report, including public input. At our June 13th meeting, that composite will be distributed in an addendum and becomes public at that point. It is discussed and voted. And then we will vote on the FY '20 salary for the superintendent as well. And then the cycle begins again. Okay, so... Who evaluates? Everyone here but John, who has probably been to more meetings than all of us combined except for the superintendent this year. So, sorry about that. But since you just joined, but Eileen will also evaluate. What else do I wanna tell you? If you look at the rubric, I've kind of color-coded it to make it really accessible. There are four standards that we are required to evaluate the superintendent on. Instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. These are really broadly defined in the rubric and I put that right underneath the titles. And then we have selected out about 14 indicators and I've listed those as well. So, if you're gonna do anything, spend some time really getting to know this rubric because it's, this is the basis upon which you will evaluate the superintendent. And this tool was developed by the Department of Education in collaboration with MASE and MASSS. Anything else that I wanna say? There's a list of data sources. But I wanted to just briefly throw it out to those of you who have done this before, how you go about assembling the data that you need to then go ahead and write your evaluations? If you have any tips for anyone who hasn't yet done this?
Well, I gave my tip a long time ago. You start at the beginning of the year and you write things down. But because I think it's best for Peter if you can give concrete examples. Because, you know, the evaluation isn't really just to say, "Oh, he did great" or "He did poorly." But it's where are his areas of strength so that he can build, you know, keep those in play? And where are his opportunities for improvement so that he can be improving those? So, as concrete as you can be, that's the most helpful, I think, for him to then take it and use it going forward. So, that's not helpful.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I took Mary's advice a few years ago. Just started at the beginning and keep track of concrete examples. That's really important. And one thing that I remember doing, because I haven't done this in a couple of years, but is going back and, you know, go back and look at certain parts of the school committee meetings. You know, go back and really, really look at, or get the minutes out and read the minutes again or just to refresh if you haven't been keeping track. I think that's a really good resource.
Adam?
I just wanna clarify, looking at all of these examples of evidence and observations, these are our own observations. These might not necessarily be me going and talking to members of the community and getting their input. Should they have that input, they should submit that directly to you. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes. Anybody else? John?
Thank you for my get-out-of-jail-free card. I would say that, you know, I think that what Mary said is exactly correct. But feedback is best in the moment. So, while it's good, of course, you know, to write these things down so that they can show up as, you know, a summed assessment, you know, it's always good at the same time to contemporaneously, you know, praise things that worked really well and say, "Geez, this really maybe should've been a little bit different." And I think the other thing that I would reflect on is, as everybody, you know, here understands, the fact that we've had three superintendents in the last year, you know, is a function of, you know, some challenges in having a candid conversation between the superintendent and the school committee. And, you know, as we start, you know, with Peter here, this is the opportunity to make sure that we have full candor in that conversation so that both Peter and the school committee can grow in that process.
And I will just, one last reminder, your individual evaluations are public documents. So, though they will not be brought to a meeting, they can be requested. And so, you need to know that. Okay? All right. If you have any questions at all, just email me about the process.
Can I make one comment too? So, Diane referenced that she had pulled out specific standards that we had talked about at the beginning of the year. If you remember, when I proposed my goals, I actually aligned my professional practice and student learning goals as well as some of the district goals. I actually took an extra step at the beginning of the year of aligning those goals with elements of the rubric so that when we got to this point of the year, there was a clear connection. And to make that just a little bit easier for you to be able to write an evaluation around. That said, it doesn't preclude you, if you have additional information or evidence of performance in any other part of the rubric, you are certainly free to share that. I just wanna make sure that's clear. Even though there was a focus at the beginning of the year, it shouldn't in any way limit your thinking.
Michael?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. So, I agree with, I echo what Peter said. Just, I do recognize that, you know, those four errors are the main focus. We should, you know, we should evaluate. But also, I want to say, you know, we can just, you know, break that limit, right? And then to, if you have good things, right? But beyond those four errors that we should put in, if there's something that you need to improve, right? Beyond those four errors that we can also put in, so.
On the template, there are boxes for additional comments. And so, that would be appropriate for those. Okay. We have quite a bit of policy to get through, so I'm gonna toss it over to Amy.
So, the first thing in your packet, going back a couple of meetings, we presented the policy surrounding non-resident tuition charges. And since then, we really didn't receive any feedback, any other feedback. So, I have for you a second read on policy JFABA. And it's in your packet.
Do you want comments by a certain?
No, no, this is a second read.
This is a second read.
This is the second read. So, actually, I'm really looking if, for a motion to approve it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
The next on the list, so we had a policy meeting recently. Sorry. I'm not gonna try with the dates again. And then we have four policies that we are presenting tonight for a first read. Two of the policies are updates. The nondiscrimination, notice of nondiscrimination is an update. And the students who are homeless, enrollment rights and services, those are both updates. And then we have two new policies. This is just part of what has come down from the state of things that we need to look at, we need to update. And that, the two new ones are the, I'm sorry, I'm scrolling down so I get the right names. Educational opportunities for military children and also educational opportunities for children in foster care. So, those are both two new policies that we are presenting tonight. And I'm gonna ask Dawn if you have any particular comments around them.
I thought you were... It's past my bedtime. No, they, like Amy shared, these have all, though I did wanna sort of indicate that MASC did not have any model policies that complied with the requirements that were expected to put forth for our coordinated program review. And so, we sort of went out on our own. So, these have actually, all four of them have been already approved and vetted by our attorneys and by DUSI, so.
So, if you have any comments or questions, I would, do you want me to pause? Do you have something?
No, I was just gonna say, don't expect anything from me.
Oh. I would appreciate comments emailed back. We're gonna look at this at our May 8th, 9th, whatever, meeting. You know, because I don't have the dates. So, if you could please get back to me by April the 26th with any comments or questions or suggestions, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, Michael?
Question is, it's not about policy itself. It's more related to the, well, I have this third one, the educational opportunities for military children. And I guess, you know, earlier, I missed the chance to ask the question about, you know, the kindergarten, what we approve that DESE. So, my question is that, you know, I do understand that, you know, right now, the priorities are given to the siblings, right? Right? So, are we going, are we going to consider also include, you know, the military children into the priority?
The purpose of the military children policy is that we can't deny sort of a waiting period if they fail to produce records, those sorts of things. Which sometimes when families are moving as frequently as they are, they, we have to enroll them. So, if we had a military family that moved in, for example, in Boxborough, they would, we would make room for them at Blanchard and same with one of our Acton elementary's if they moved into Acton. Is that what you're asking?
No, actually, what you are talking about is about the policy itself. I'm not questioning about the policy itself. I'm just, you know, the question is directly for that kindergarten priority.
Oh, yeah, Marie, go ahead.
So, Michael, what we talked about earlier tonight, that the school committee voted, is about school choice, which means accepting students from other districts, from other towns to attend Acton and Boxborough. So, while you voted school choice for one seat at kindergarten, it's a sibling from another town. This policy, the military policy is around kids who live in Acton or Boxborough. And they would have the hometown guarantee, they would have sibling guarantee to their school of choice, what we call open enrollment. But if they're a new family, they don't have priority, that's not one of our priorities for being able to attend your first-choice school.
I guess my question is not about, you know, if it's out of town or it's in town. It's, my question's universal. You know, are we going to consider taking the military children into the priority list?
I guess I don't know.
Right now, it's a siblings.
I don't think we can legally.
And right now, it's only siblings.
I don't think we can legally. There's rules about how school choice works and that you can, it's a lottery. And so, I don't believe we can, as a group, prioritize any one population.
But siblings are priorities.
Siblings, that is in the ruling, that siblings get priority. And then after that, any open seating, it's a lottery.
Michael, I wanna confirm, I think you're asking a... Michael, I want to confirm, I think you're asking a very different question, though. I think you're actually asking about our own kindergarten registration process, and would we ever consider having military children have priority in our own kindergarten registration process? Is that, am I correct? Yeah. So. Right. So what I would say is, right now, that's not in our policy around school choice and in our process. That is certainly something, if the committee wanted to consider it, that would be within the committee's purview.
I think what Mary said is correct, that the laws around school choice is a Massachusetts general.
We're using two definitions of school choice, that's the problem. In district. So, okay, and then a couple of meetings ago, the committee asked for the policy subcommittee to take a look at our naming memorials policy. So I'm gonna let Adam address that, and we did meet and discuss that.
So we met two meetings ago, and I wouldn't be able to remember the date either at this point. And we started the discussion off because a number of the folks on the policy subcommittee are fairly new to the school committee, so we received sort of a brief history of how and why this policy around the naming of school facilities is in place. And, you know, we discussed whether or not it made sense to waive the three-year waiting period for the specific request around the pool. And, you know, the committee, the subcommittee recognized that, you know, that policy was put in place to sort of help remove some of the emotional response to the longevity aspects of naming a facility. And while we do believe that the person in question did provide a lot to the district, we really wanted to respect that ability to have everybody grieve in time, but also encourage, you know, the community members who are interested in this to find additional ways in the near term to honor somebody, and then also encourage them to come back to us in the three-year period or following the three-year waiting period around naming the facility. So at this point, the policy subcommittee is recommending that we follow the policy around waiting the three-year period, and that we don't recommend at this point to bring to the full school committee a vote around naming the facility.
Any discussion on that? John?
I completely agree with what Adam said. I thought it was, is very well stated, that there is a time to grieve. There are things that can be done in the short term, and everybody can mark their calendar for three years, and we fully expect to see people here three years from now to talk about this again.
Was there any discussion of some of the short-term ways to honor?
There weren't, no. But, you know, we saw a significant outreach from the community and felt that they definitely had a desire to honor. But this one specific aspect around renaming a facility was probably something that should wait for the three years, but there are a number of other things that they could do in the meantime that might equally honor.
He's also honored on the, if you open up your interaction catalogs for spring, there's a great little piece about him.
Mary?
So I have to say, I'm actually surprised by the decision, and I guess I wouldn't have come to the same decision. I wonder if, so I personally think three years is a really long time, and I think that there's a lot of people in the community who would really support this. So I would suggest maybe you consider maybe not the full three years, maybe wait a full year or, and then let them apply in the second year or something. But I, yeah, I guess I do see circumstances where there are different situations, and so some situations might require three years, but I don't think every situation does. And for me, this one doesn't, so.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, Mary, and I think that the policy subcommittee didn't preclude members of the community to come back at a regular basis in front of this committee and continue to advocate for the renaming. I think where the subcommittee struggled was finding a balance between not creating too many loopholes or exceptions to the policy that admittedly was put in place, I believe, a year and a half ago. And so they really, the subcommittee wanted to sort of honor the language that this committee as a whole had voted in favor of, at least, you know, in the near term. But, you know, again, that there was significant outreach from the community, and we encourage the community to stay engaged so that, you know, in the future point, this might be a possibility.
Also, I, one thing that is always available, if a year from now, the community comes back and says, well, we really don't want to wait the three years, we'd like you to reconsider it, we can always reconsider it at that point. But as of, as of right now, we felt like it was too soon to make any kind of a move.
Thank you for that update. We have three more things to do, and then we can go. In your packet 9.4, you will find a schedule for 2019-20 school committee meetings. We have not yet identified a date for the summer workshop, but if I could ask Beth to send out some options, we'll do this through email to pin down a date for that. Also, please note that November 5th is a Tuesday. We will meet on that Tuesday because we have very high participation, I hope that continues, at the MASCE annual meeting down in Hyannis. So we want to clear those dates. That's why that Tuesday is happening.
Is that an election day?
Is it?
Just occurred to me.
Yeah, it's 2020, huh?
I don't know, I'm so sorry, it literally.
No, this is, yeah, this is.
Nothing. Okay.
This should be 2019, shouldn't it?
Yeah, you're correct. That's a typo.
There's a typo, there's a typo in the, in the calendar.
Yeah. The summer, the summer business meeting, the annual workshop, should say 2019.
2019.
Yeah.
So there's no, no election day.
Okay. So we just did, we just covered that. Okay. We have been exploring throughout this year, since November, different venues for our school committee meeting, and it's time to make a decision. It's purposeful that we move the furniture in here so that we could try it out in here. So I would like to just spend a couple of minutes getting some feedback on the preferred venue. This would be a permanent change, and really, there's no cost with one, going with one or the other. They're pretty much the same, so. Amy?
While I really appreciate the chairs and this feels better, I still prefer the admin building. It felt very, it felt to me that it was a much more intimate setting, and the quality of conversation that we had with each other at that meeting felt a little bit more robust because we were more closely together. It felt more of a conversation, more of a real, people were more, I don't know, it felt more, I guess, robust. I'll leave it there.
I totally agree with Amy. I believe that this, this physical furniture is great. It's superior to what we have in this space, but I feel that this space is still sort of large and echoey and impersonal. And I, you know, I think about it from the engagement that we have with each other as a committee, but also how we feel connected to the audience, and I think it was great that we had a really high audience turnout the last time we were in the auditorium, because we sort of got to see what it would feel like to be engaged with those people, and I felt like they were much closer to us, and I felt that there was a greater sense of engagement in that space. I think the scale is right for most meetings that we have. I do wonder, though, there might be some times where meetings will be too large for that space, and we should probably at least have a secondary space in waiting, should we anticipate a large turnout for a meeting.
I agree with what they both said. I felt like the audience was much more a part of the meeting in that space than it is in this space. They're just too far away, and when you're sitting over here, you don't even see them. And looking up there, it's just, it's just the way it's configured, I think, is way better over there.
Probably because where I was sitting, you know, the location I was sitting, because the two meeting I was there, I was kind of backing off, and I couldn't see the screen. And there, I think there is some angles that for some members is not gonna be working very well, so I actually liked here better.
I actually like having the speakers the way it was in the other area. Like, it felt like they were speaking to us instead of speaking to the audience, which is our business meeting. And so to me, I found it really intimate. I mean, sitting here, it's much harder for me to see speakers in here. I mean, the tables and furniture makes this infinitely better than it usually is, but, you know, I think the screen is really small, so it's hard to see. Like, I felt like, should I turn and look at who's speaking, but then I gotta look at the, you know. So for me, I really like having the speakers in front of us. It made it feel more intimate. It did make it feel like more conversational between the committee.
Well, just to that, we can rearrange. Also, we can make some rearrangement too, yeah.
Yes, there are more options than we took advantage of in this space.
Well, since I sat in the audience in both locations, I can speak from the perspective of an audience member. And I actually like this setup a little bit better. I do agree with the idea that repositioning the speaker, you know, has some merit to it. But my biggest concern in the end is that, notwithstanding the substantial audience, which is with us right at the moment, you know, I would hope that from time to time, there would be large groups at school committee meetings, and I do think that other space will be overwhelmed, you know, on those occasions. So I'm a little nervous about having that always be the site if we can't anticipate what the turnout might be.
Yeah, I, I like this space for some reasons and that space for other reasons, and it's, so, I mean, I, I'm the youngest of four. I just go along with whatever, what the decision is.
So I'm gonna give a chance for Maya to weigh in, so I will get back to you at our next business meeting on this. But thank you for your input, and it was kind of fun actually exploring these two venues this year. And certainly appreciate the new furniture, for sure. Okay. We have, do have a statement of warrants. There are nine warrants on the agenda. They are, I think, hopefully they've all been circulated. If you haven't signed them, please do so. Vendor warrants 19-020, 19-020 PR, and 19-021 PR in the amount of $2,434,406.79. And student activity fund warrants 19-020, 19-0, oh, that's for Blanchard, 19-020 for the junior high, 19-020 for the senior high, and 19-021 for the senior high in the amount of $54,986.53. And finally, payroll warrants P1920 and P1921 in the total amount of $5,108,973.74. Okay, our final item, besides the FYI, is a consent agenda. I will go ahead and list each item. If you want to put a hold on it and consider that separately from the consent agenda, just state "hold" after I read out the item. Minutes from the 3/21/19 school committee meeting, hold. Minutes of the 3/25/19 school committee meeting, hold. Okay. Approval of the Nordic ski team trip to Norway. Approval of the exchange trip to Spain. And acceptance of $900 gift from Danny's Place Youth Services to the ABRHS Envirothon Club. Okay.
Need to approve the consent agenda for item C, D, and E?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes? Okay. So Beth, did you produce for us a tracked version for changes?
Okay, so looking at the March 25th school committee workshop minutes, I received a request to edit on page two those bullets, and I made a copy of that just page two. Does everybody see that? And so the requested change was the one, two, third from the bottom of the first set of bullets that would now say, "My top priority picks: Do the district's stated core values, vision, and mission fully embrace, reflect, and capitalize upon the value of the diversity in the educational community, comma, expanding the definition of equity from ensuring access to outcomes, and consistency of grading practices." That's the proposed change, the only proposed change I received to these minutes. Okay, can you talk about that? I just didn't have time to look at what you said.
It's also in the same, yeah, it's also in the same, it's just the comments to include that it was mentioned, "The wellness and achievement are like twins, working together." And the other one is, "We need to support our students to be able to attend desired colleges."
You gotta orient us. It's on this page?
Just add in two, adding two bullet items.
Oh, you're adding two, so will you repeat them?
Okay, sure. Wellness and achievements are like twins, working together. And the second bullet is, "We need to support our students to be able to attend desired colleges."
So as I read this portion of the minutes, this relates to one bullet point per member of the committee explaining where they had put their money. So I'm curious, why would we be adding bullet points if they were for a specific, a single bullet point per committee member?
Beth, is that accurate? Was there one bullet point per committee member?
I don't think so. I guess not.
So the general approach that we took was to try and summarize what the conversation was, rather than trying to list everything everyone said. You know, because it's a workshop, it's a little bit different structure than a full committee meeting. And the nature of this, again, it was really to capture the broad ideas. We tried to select things from each committee member to represent something that they said. But again, it's a workshop. We didn't also want to try and attribute individual statements to individuals because it was really about the collective discussion that had happened. That was, that was our approach, but again, that's for your discussion.
My point is that the meeting minutes should reflect, you know, the facts of the meeting, so we should not exclude anything that, you know, stated in the meeting, so that's my point.
I don't remember, I don't remember the statement about getting into a college of choice being among the issues that we discussed, or am I missing something?
Sorry.
Also, I think it's really important that minutes are not a transcript of a meeting, so they are a summary of the meeting. I don't, I think that, and it would not be possible, nor do we, do we have a record of everything, everything that was said. So I disagree with you on that.
So let me ask you something. How strongly do you feel that this has to be included?
Because I kind of feel this, I feel strong. Because I kind of feel this, I feel strongly, because that's kind of the main couple of things that I feel that we need to be included in the entry point. So that's why I stated.
Okay. And then I do have a question about the college piece, because that specific issue was not part of the entry plan specifically. That wasn't something that we were ranking by spending money in our Spenda Buck. So I actually don't remember it either. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that one, I have to say. Amy?
I have to agree with you on that. I don't remember that being a discussion. And my feeling is, when you give broad highlights of the discussion, I think something that we generally don't, I think that it's, I think that that statement may well have been made, but it wasn't, it's not representative of the full discussion that we had.
I have to disagree with that. I remember even Michael also mentioned something about helping the kids to be able to make their desired college, because in the long run, then there is helping them in terms of be able to support themselves. So that's along the line. Maybe not exactly the same wording, but I think the attention, the spirit is the same.
Michael?
I did see that, you know, in that workshop, I said, you know, I talked about, you know, the grading system and the equity. And I did see that, you know, to, one purpose is to help our students get into the decent college.
So the consistency around grading practices is in there, but because colleges were not mentioned in the entry program and that, in the entry plan, and we weren't ranking that specifically, I still have a level of discomfort in including that. It gives the impression that this is part of the entry plan, and it should be prioritized as one of our goals. And while it's not off the, it's not, not part of, it's not excluded completely from the conversation, it wasn't explicit in the entry plan that that was one of the things that we would focus on as a goal. Does that make sense?
I might suggest that it fits under a broader category that we did discuss, in that is teaching and learning. I don't see the need to be that specific. If we're a committee that is getting into that level of detail, we're going to fall off the tracks pretty quick. So I would say that as long as it fits in one of the categories, it doesn't need to be explicitly stated in that level of detail.
Then, then all the bullets, to me, all the bullets should just to say, you know, like what I said, for me, what I picked, right, from the entry plans, instead of just explaining why you picked it, right? If one bullet saying that, you know, it's planned, why it picked it, then other bullets, you know, should have the same, you know, equity. Equity is our core value. So, yeah.
Yes, so let me, did you want to weigh in? Okay, let me just make one, one comment here. So if it's important to have the rationale behind one of your comments, it should be made absolutely clear that this was, this was not part of the entry plan, but a personal comment about a rationale that supported a statement that, or a choice that was made in the Spenda Buck protocol regarding the entry plan and the prioritizing of those questions.
Can we just, you know, like, you know, if Angie wanted to include those two bullets, or include, just maybe just add what, as Angie's personal, right? Because I do read, like, one, two, three, four, five, six, number six, if you read the number six.
Michael, I'm going to reject that. I'm not going to, there's 11 members here. I'm not going to get into, I'm not going to, I don't want to set a precedent for 11 individuals insisting that what they said has to be attributed to them and stated in the minutes. It's just, it's too cumbersome, and it's not, it's not what the minutes are really for. I'm just going to spend another minute on this. So Angie, and then.
So are you saying that you're gonna exclude the second line, but include the first line?
What I would like to do is, if you feel strongly that your rationale for your Spenda Buck protocol needs to be in there, but that rationale wasn't part of the entry plan specifically, then it should be very clearly stated in the minutes.
The first one is?
Yeah, so repeat the first one for me, if you would.
Wellness and achievement are like twins, working together.
Tessa?
I'm sorry. None of these are attributed to any person on here. Like, no one, I don't, I can't even reading 11 of them tell you which one was mine. I have absolutely no idea. None of these should be attributed to any one of us, because the minutes are not meant to be a transcript. It is an overall feeling of what happened at the meeting. And I see things in here about the tension between wellness and academic opportunities. And to me, that encompasses the bit of the conversation that we had. And I don't think that we should spend any more time attributing quotations even to specific people, because that's not the purpose of the minutes. And if that were the purpose of the minutes, Beth would be burnt out so far, like.
Right. And I'm not suggesting that we make any attributions with any specific, linking any statement to any specific person. It could be some, if, I just, I don't want to exclude if there's a strong feeling among members that a rationale needs to be included. We could just say, "A member failed," or "Members failed." Okay. We're done. Nope. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Beth to include a statement in the minutes. So we'll have to craft that now, won't we, if we want to?
Somebody needs to make a motion about what you said.
Okay.
I move that we approve the motion, the minutes as amended in the handout we received with the feedback that Beth received in time to include them. So.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I think the reason I put it there, because I can feel.
So you need to, I don't, I don't want to hear anymore about the rationales. I just, if you want to make a friendly amendment, you can. Otherwise, we're just going to move to a vote.
I want to amend the, I want to make a motion to include the wellness and achievement are twins, and they're not complementing each other.
So there's a friendly amendment on the floor. So is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we will now vote on the amendment to the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the amendment passes. Now we will vote on the, on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Minutes of three?
Stay.
Okay, so the minutes of the 3/25/19 School Committee Workshop meeting are approved. Let's move to the minutes of the 3/21/19 School Committee meeting.
So I'll move to approve these as amended in the handout provided to us, which includes in item number nine, that Michael Bo questioned the accuracy of the projections and requested that the inaccuracies be fixed.
Okay, any discussion?
Excuse me, thank you. And that in item number 10, under School Committee Discussion, there's an additional paragraph in response to a question about Acton's percentage decreasing for FY '20.
Yep, discussion.
Yeah, what's, what's the purpose of this added paragraph?
Could I just ask Dave if that was consistent with what he said? Were you, okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yep.
I also submitted another one after today. Should I talk about now?
Yes, this is the time to do it.
Okay. So if you take a look at the page two, and under item nine, I remember we talked about the Universal, the all-day kindergarten. And we, I remember we agreed that we should do a hybrid this year. I remember that we have a discussion on that. And I, with my memory, that I remember that we, this is a very important topic. We need to bring back to the table, and we need to discuss that. And, but I'm a little concerned about the sentence saying, "A multi-year funding strategy is needed for the Universal ADK." It doesn't really talk about, we will, we will discuss that later. It sounds, it sounds more like that we have approved it than...
The next sentence says?
The next sentence, "A discussion will be brought to..."
To the school committee in the fall, asking for this funding.
Yeah, so it does sound like that it's asking for the funding. It sounds like we have approved, and we're moving to, into the funding process. So I would just want to clarify, because this is an important topic, and we want to bring this back, too. So my recommendation is that we need to discuss this Universal ADK in the future, and it is decided, if we move on, it may require a multi-year funding strategy, just to clarify that, because it's a decision we haven't made.
Any further discussion? Adam?
Yeah, I understand what Angie's saying. So what I would propose is that that sentence, "A multi-year funding strategy is needed and in development for Universal ADK," which I think should clarify the fact that it's not been agreed upon yet.
Right. Did you get that, Beth?
Is needed and is in development.
It's in development. It still sounds like that we have.
I'm sorry, I thought you were saying. So I'm the one who said it. I don't think
it was as direct as it is in these notes. So I would, I would say something more like, might be considered, should be considered, something like that. The intent is definitely to come back to the committee in the fall and have you all talk about whether you want to move forward, and if so, how to possibly fund it.
Michael?
Actually, I have, I want one more, I have one more amendment for this, which is in the, under the number nine kindergarten registration update, the second paragraph. There are so, in the third row, there's, if you read that, this will be considered a transition year. So I would say that, let's remove that, because, you know, it sounds to me that, you know, we already approved this Universal ADK, then this is a transition year. But actually, we haven't revealed that yet in the school committee, and they haven't moved yet. So let's remove that.
Any further conversation on that?
Well.
Yes, and Paul has, I'm recognizing.
So it says, "A multi-year funding strategy is needed, change is needed to, could be considered."
And I do remember hearing us talking about a transition year. So I just see this as being reflective of what was said in the meeting. So I don't see why we would delete that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I looked at my right, yeah, sorry.
I'm not responding to what you're talking about, but I did think that Marie said that currently, there is going to be a half-day classroom at Blanchard at the meeting. That's what we discussed. And that's not reflected in here, because it says, it says it had been decided to go ahead with hybrid kindergarten at all schools. But the discussion at that meeting was that a half-day kindergarten class would still exist at. Yeah, we could add a sentence that says, "One half-day kindergarten will still exist at Blanchard."
I know we discussed it.
No, just, "A second classroom at Blanchard will have a hybrid." So hybrids will exist at all schools.
So hold on. I'm gonna ask Peter to weigh in here.
I'm gonna, this is your decision, but I'm going to make a recommendation right now, that we actually pull these minutes back, we review them, and we come back next time with something that we feel accurately reflects that discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Wow, I'll never do a consent agenda. I'm just kidding. No, I really actually appreciate the input. It's a very robust discussion, and I appreciate all points of view. So thank you for coming forward with those. Even if they are controversial, they're, we respect that you're right to say what you need to say. Okay? Okay, so just, I want to point out in the FYI section, I asked, Ginny would like to focus your attention on one of the, one of the items.
The April 27th Out of the Darkness Walk for Suicide Awareness, there's, it's in your, it's in your packet, and I am going to be walking on Team Thailand. I invite anybody who wants to be a part of that team to get in touch with me, or any other team. But I know, I spoke with Emma Lewis Cunningham today, and she's hoping for a robust turnout. I guess last year, there was not a very good turnout. And she's hoping for members of the administration and school district generally to be in attendance at that walk to show support for the families who are dealing with this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night.